Well, thank you and welcome to the March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Sherbin Select Board Meeting. We're start quickly and open session go immediately to an executive session and come back in open session. We estimate some point probably between seven and seven thirty. I guess. So Diane, I'm going to ask you to read the agenda when we come back unless anyone has a protest that I don't probably read the agenda when we come back into open session since this is just. Really, I can just have my formality to go right into executive session. Does anyone have an issue with that?
Well, do you want her to read the just the executive session?
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry. Yeah, Diane, I'm gonna ask the town administrator to please read the executive session's agenda.
We can't hear you. There you go.
Okay, there we go. So, once the board ends executive session, they will enter into open session. The first item is to meet with town council. To discuss a complaint letter dated August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one from Jonathan Hudson Walker and Lisa Hudson Walker of Silverwood Farm. LLC and potential litigation against the Conservation Commission. And the status of consultants review and report pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A. Section twenty-one, A, one, three, and seven. And Suffolk Construction versus D Cam four forty-nine Mass, four forty-four, two thousand and seven. Item two is meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one. A, three, six, and seven. And Suffolk Construction versus D Cam four forty-nine Mass. Four four four, two thousand and seven. To discuss thirty-one Hunting Lane, Forty-one North Main Street, Iga Labasey et al versus the Town of Sherbin. Land Court Number Twenty-one, M I S C P S zero 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 one nine three. Parentheses H P S and thirty-one Hunting Lane. LLC versus Sherbin Board of Appeals. Housing Appeals Committee Number Two thousand and twenty-one dash oh five. And Forty-one North Main Street LLC versus Sherbin Board of Appeals. Housing Appeals Committee Number Two thousand and twenty-one dash oh six. The third item is to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation of the chair so declares. That an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating possession of the select board in the town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the town library pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A. Section twenty-one, A, three, and seven. And Suffolk Construction versus D Cam four forty-nine Mass. Four forty-four, two thousand and seven. You'll need a second and a roll call to enter into executive session.
Okay, as Chair declared, an executive session is warranted for the agenda items as just read by the town administrator. There and I also moved that we go into executive session for those agenda items. So I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George on mute?
Hi.
And Paul also on mute. I I I read that. Okay.
So I was going to turn the recording off now.
Yep, please turn the recording off. Well, thank you. We've come out of a longer than expected. Executive session. We are now in open session. So welcome again. This is the March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Select Board Meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna ask the town administrator to please read the agenda with the exclusion of the executive session items which are already read into the record at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay, so we'll start with the public comment if anybody has one, but nobody has reached out to me that they do have one tonight. There'll be a consent agenda with the payroll warrant for the interim town administrator. The next scheduled meetings, which is March twenty-fourth. Then March twenty-sixth, which is the Saturday advisory hearings, and then the twenty-eighth of March if the hearings need to be continued. I also have a consideration of a one-day liquor license for Pauline Bounds for March twelfth. For a data fiber fundraiser. Item number two is acknowledgement of a letter from the Dopping Brook Road residents. Number three is consideration revisions of a draft earmark letter to Senator Rebecca Roush's office. Item number four is a library construction update from Brian Conley, one of the library trustees. Number five is the consideration of capital requests. The F Y twenty-three, the Pine Hill School Committee, Dawn Patory. And the Dover Sherwin Regional School Committee Review of Capital Request. Item number six is a consideration of draft warrants continue from previous meetings. The Council on Aging is here with Pete Hogland, Chair of the COA, along with Sue Kelleher. There is a citizens petition article to amend the open space subdivision plan. From Rebecca Honeywell from the citizens petition. A review of the Finance Director Bylaw, Town Administrator Bylaw, and then a continued discussion regarding funding sources for the paving assessment. Of Rockwood Street. At seven, we have a presentation on MBTA communities from Gino Calucci, our town planner. Number eight is a reserve request for reserve fund transfer from Deb Suffering, our finance director. Number nine is the review of the draft annual town meeting warrant. Item number ten is select board reports and interim town administrator reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have any motions or discussion relative to the agenda? Yeah, Paul?
We have approval of the agenda.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George? Paul?
Hi.
I am also I. Okay, moving on, we have consent agenda. The motions are discussion relative to consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, any second?
I'll second, but I'll have a question on the liquor license. Where where's the facility? Where's the event being held?
At the Sherwin Community Center.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted. You didn't say that. I just.
It was in one. It was in something.
I must have missed it. Okay, yeah, I I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, agenda item number two. Acknowledgement letter from Doping Brook Road residents to the select board. So I had one to stay and do you want to read this into the record? Or acknowledge it?
Yes, please read it. Request that you read it.
Very good. Read it, not muted.
Yeah.
It's either one or the other with me, right?
So true.
I'm going to read the email from Mr. Mike Flanagan and the letter from Matt Mitchell. Is that what you want me to read into the record?
We'll start with the letter.
Okay, the letter from Matt Mitchell. It was dated November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. And it went to the town clerk, the Sherwin Select Board Conservation and Board of Health. It said, Dear Town Clerk Jackie Morris, this is regarding a Massachusetts public request. This is a request under Massachusetts Public Records. Mass General Law, Chapter Sixty-six, Section Ten, I am requesting that I be provided a copy of the following records. All documents pertaining to A E Com study regarding the hydrological analysis of star water and other impacts affecting my property. As well as well as others in the surrounding area. To include the full reports submitted to the Town of Sherwin by A E Com. Also, any and all analysis and reports pertaining to the identification. And categorization of the origin slash cause of the issues. As well as any measures identified or discussed. That may be undertaken to remedy the impacts of the excess water. I recognize you may charge reasonable cost for copies as well as for personal time needed to comply with this request. The Public Records Law requires you provide me with a written response within ten business days. And if you cannot comply with my request, you are statutorily required to provide an explanation in writing. Respectfully submitted, Matt Mitchell, nineteenth Dopping Brook Road.
All right, and I guess I read the.
Excuse me?
Sorry. I was gonna say, you know, it's a little lengthy. Feel free to read the email into the record.
Okay, this came from Mike Flanagan and it is dated February eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two. From Mr. Flanagan of Twenty-seven Dopping Brook Road. Dear Select Board. Board of Health, Conservation and Public Works. My name is Mike Flanagan. I live at Twenty-seven Dopping Brook Road and I am in a butter to Silverwood Farm. I'm writing to express my frustration with the lack of action and sense of urgency. In resolving what has become a significant concern to the health of my family and the value of my property. I learned last night if attending a virtual Conservation Commission meeting. That the engineering study would not be completed until April at the earliest. I asked to discuss why the existing order of conditions, D E P number two eighty-three dash oh three nine eight. Was not being enforced by the Conservation Commission. Despite Silverwood Farm being on last night's agenda. Neil Kessler informed me that I have to formally request the enforcement of that order. To be added to the agenda of the next meeting. Which I have since requested. Neil also indicated that if I have concerns or complaints, I should take that up with the town. I first engaged the Conservation Commission last spring. There was some back and forth with Silverwood Farm to remedy the situation, but if anything, the problem has only worsened. Last fall, I was told the town was taking this seriously. And hired an engineering firm and would issue a report by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. I was hopeful that after three years, this would be resolved in early two thousand and twenty-two. Ahead of the spring thaw and rainy season, I was obviously misguided. I understand why others involved want to kick the can down the road, but in the meantime. The property owners on Dopping Book are being continuously punished. Last spring and summer, I lived with a flooded basement and garage with significant mold growing on the walls, the toys and the furniture. My neighbor Janet Mitchell had even more water and mold growth than here than their home. They also have a new septic tank at risk. It's placement right in the line of fire from all this excess water. We have seen significant erosion in the back of our lots and our yards are constantly flooded both front and back. We both have young children who are being continuously exposed to this dangerous mold growth. This is a large, open, uninhabited forest at the end of Dopping Brook Road, yet I don't understand why this excess water is actively forced through a few inhabited lots. This issue seems to touch multiple committees in town. But it doesn't appear the town wants to enforce the D E P order of conditions. Nor have any urgency in bringing this up to a head. Frankly. I have a loss of what to do here. What would you do if you lived on Dopping Brook knowing that in a few months your garage and basement was about to get inundated with water and filled with mold? As a fellow Sherwin resident and parent, how would you protect your children? I welcome any and all advice to a very concerned resident, parent and property owner. Regardless, Mike Flanagan.
Right.
So Eric, can I request that Sean Colleen maybe give us an update as to where we are?
Sure, I just want to stay within the realms of what's in the agenda. It says acknowledgement of letter. So as long as it's brief and it's just within the confines of that. Sean, you on here? Usually is.
Is.
You have fifty-one people on tonight.
I know.
I'm not exactly sure where to start.
Well. Yeah, maybe. So I'll actually start with something here. Yeah, there is a draft report out there. It's still draft. And I think it's going to be released, but you know, just the nature of it's going to be reviewed by Conservation Commission. And it's going to be reviewed by the select board and then it's the nature of the, you know, meetings and drafts, it will be released as final. I don't don't think it's going to provide a solution to what Dopping Brooks looking for here. They're actually looking for an actual solution here. There'll be a small group of us that are going to actually look at to see if there's something that the town can do within reason to actually provide a certain. Solution to. To this water and we have we have decided that we are going to get our engineering consultant to actually look at the an actual solution for this, if that makes any sense. Versus like looking at the the previous studies really an overall big picture. Here's stormwater. Here's where it's going. Here's some stuff that might be happening. But there's no, I'm gonna say there's no hardcore solution in there. And I wouldn't. We are going to engage him as soon as this week coming up to actually look at a solution. Does that summarize Sean?
Yeah, I would. I would even further that to say. That may be a possible short-term. Temporary but immediate. Solution as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's still a plan to be had to to do the long term. We are. We are already in talks with what could be done immediately before the spring ends.
So if I could, Eric?
Yep. Yep, please.
I do want to assure the residents. That. We're going to take this serious. And I. Agree with the latter to the extent that it. It portrays them as being the recipient of unwanted flooding. I think we're committed to addressing that. The process involves sorting out. What to do and who is to do it? That's what's taken so long, but I. Agree with the residents that. They should not be bearing the burden of. The passage of time. While we sort out these other issues. And therefore. Want to. Commend Sean Colleen and and urge Sean and the board to work on a. Quick temporary fix. To protect the residents.
Okay. Anything else?
Here. Excuse me, I'm Robert Levine, thirty Dopping Brook Road. I just wanted to also let you know about some concerns. Is it am I? Is that okay to speak?
Yes, but I I don't want to open up a huge foray because it's a very large, complicated project. And you know, this for the agenda item, it's reading these into the record. We understand we've met an executive session, you know, actions are being taken. But before, like I get the slow of every single resident commenting about the flooding that's going on there, we've gone outside the bounds of this agenda item. So. You can say something briefly within the confines of that letter. But I I don't want it to turn into an hour-long agenda and we know that there is know that there is an issue out there. We acknowledge this issue out there and we are taking actions on it. But you can say something briefly, please.
Okay, I I just wanted to basically say I am on the opposite side of the street of the two other neighbors and so my. Effect or the effect on my property is a little different. Thank God it's not coming into my house. However, it is. It is affecting our property. The the water, we are the recipient of all this water that is flowing from wherever it's coming from right now. And so just that. I wanted to just let you know that that it is affecting the whole street, not just the two that have. You know, written those letters and I will also will submit one for the record. In the coming week.
Okay, very good.
All right. Hey, Eric, I'm Jack Bentfeld, nine Dopping Brook Road. Let me just. Add to that. Water's a mess and I know you guys are looking at it, but I wanted you to know. That we're pretty desperate where we are as well, so help us.
Okay. All right, thank you. And we do appreciate that. We do know that. Like I said, this attempted agenda item was not in an open foray discussion of the situation out there. It is a serious situation out there. And we're having our consultant, I believe, actually Sean, even me, ours already sent an email to them right after our executive session about it to to get started on this. So we do acknowledge that. Anyways, we have read those two things in the record. I'm going to limit the rest of the discussion to the select board relevant to the letters. Is there anything else relevant to these letters from the from the select board?
Again, just to reassure residents that we are going to fix this thing.
All right, okay, if there's I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. Consideration and revisions to the draft earmark letter to be sent to Senator Rebecca Roush. Did I say that name right? In the background material, you have a draft letter. I've already read it and I like it. I think it's a pretty good and maybe Diane, you talked about the background on it. You got some input from other town departments on things which. Basically could be acted upon relatively quickly and things which might be. Be attractive for potential earmarks. I think it's well worded and I have no comments to it.
Yes, Jeff, Eric, we met with Jen Thompson, Deb Suffering. Sean Colleen, Police Chief Galvin, Fire Chief Zach Ward, and we went over. Items that we thought we could conclude on this earmark letter. We also I also contacted boards and committees. And other department heads, I spoke with Gino. And we've come up with a big list that almost kind of is going to mirror a lot of the. The opera request that will be coming forward at the next meeting, but in front of the select board. And we included large items and smaller items. And we put them. In the order that we think is most important. So the first one we thought that was most important was the removal of the hazardous trees. So Jen. Do you want to talk on this letter anymore from our meeting that we all had?
Well, hi, first of all, good evening and thanks. No, I think you did a great job, Diane. Unless the board wants me to go project by project, I think it's more a case of. Making sure these are the projects that the board wants on the letter and it's in the correct, you know, priority order that the board would like to see them in.
So Eric, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
My move that we send the letter and I would say I agree with you. That I have no particular revisions to it. And I like the idea of let's ask for as much as we can, let them pick and choose. Which ones they will implement, but if we don't ask, we don't get.
Yeah, and the one thing I think Jen hinted at is there an implicit priority? We do number them, we bullet them or do something. I don't have any priority to it. If I do it, I might put I might put the roundabout at one point two million, might make that number one, you know what I mean? Just because you ask for the most or whatever else. I don't have any thoughts on the order. I kind of don't want to imply there's any priority either, you know, I mean, just because it's. What do you call it? You know, that that's just going to go down a whole rabbit hole, you know, I mean, if we say the old and that's us, we're all going to have different opinions. It's going to take us, you know, thirty meetings to get through this and which one is higher priority than another. You know, I mean, but right now this, I think the list is just kind of as they came in type of thing. Yeah, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I was just going to ask how, well, this is a bigger issue, but how is the prioritization done? And I'd also like a little more information on. It why the earmarks are in such a short timeline. It was like less than a week. Is that what usually happens? Because this is an opportunity to put together something really, really convincing and. And compelling in an earmark list. And I understand the time was extremely short and you just had to get it out there and I don't mean to criticize too much, but I think. The the language is a little bit generic. And if it if it makes a difference in getting the the Senate's ear for earmarks, so to speak. It would be really good to have a heads up on this as the minute we know that they're looking for earmarks. To get townspeople who know these projects well, to try to write short bits or to at least contribute where they can. To making a document that's written with a little more urgency and first-handedness. This, that's my only comment, but there's no room to do anything with it now because it's due day after tomorrow or tomorrow, actually.
It's due tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah, so so well done on a short time scale. It's okay. I I approve.
Could I respond to one thing that Marion said?
Sure, I got Paul.
So in the past. What's typically happened is there were follow-up phone calls. So. The letter isn't our last and only bite at the apple, if you will. You put in your requests and sometimes. In over the past years that I've been on the board. I get a phone call from the rep or the senator and they. Talk about this one or that one. And there's a little bit of a discussion that goes on. I would expect that to happen here. So that details can be provided, questions can be answered. Additional. Thought could be put into what? What's more important? I recall one discussion one year where they said, you know, we can do one of these two projects. Which one do you want us to? To pursue? And you have to give them feedback then. So there will be more. More opportunity to to work on this.
Okay, that's good to know. What's the what's the kind of mechanism at the town level to respond to those? Calls from the Senator or Representative? We have a a process?
I mean, traditionally goes, you know, through town administrator to the board or maybe to the chair or something like that. I mean, what what we're going through right here is really kind of the process. They let Diane know like a week ago. And she had she worked with Jen, got a draft written up and put it before us. You're right. I mean, I I think it's very well ordered. I think the only thing we would ever probably, you know, debate is the priority order, which I think between the five of us, it's a tight party, take good six meetings. To to come up with a priority.
I agree. I agree. So I have no more comments. It's fine.
The one thing I will say, if I look at like the top three. If not four. At least the top four are all going to probably happen anyway. So I do agree putting them in a high priority because it's stuff that we're going to do and expend public funds on to some extent. I really do think they're going to happen one way or the other. And so I think I've asking an earmark for them, the stuff that we can do right away. Sometimes earmarks are only good for a year, depending on what bill it goes in and. And I think all ones we could just do, we could right do right away. And I see them all as a high priority in my personal opinion. Yeah, Jeff, do you have?
Just a clarification probably from Paul knows how these work, but do we do they actually fund a specific project or do they give you? You know, one point three million and then you figure out which ones you want to do.
No, it's specific projects.
Project by project?
Project by project.
Because we, you know, these are also just ballpark costs in this too. So you, we might have to. Use some town funds if the work. Required to do that project is more than this sort of guest of it can put in here.
So I will say that I've dealt with this in my day job earmarks. They find some grant mechanism. So they a grant mechanism is it's an existing mechanism, has an administration, has a department behind it. And so they'll go to that department and say, hey, give Sherbin. Hundred fifty thousand also trees and you have to go through and do whatever, like they have a standard agreement, blah, 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 blah. That's what actually gets executed. I also believe an earmark is not a guarantee and someone maybe Paul correct me if I'm wrong, an earmark is the the general court authorizing the expenditure. But is it still take the governor to actually execute it and say, yes, we're going to spend this hundred fifty grand?
Yes, it actually takes a second bill. So first is what's known as the authorization and then there's the appropriation. So this is the authorization for basically a borrowing to take place or an expenditure to take place. But it's up to the governor to. If he wants to borrow the money, he has to submit additional legislation with requests for. A specific bond. Or if he's got the appropriation. Then he can decide to release the appropriation.
Okay, very good.
Just one thing to keep in mind, Eric. Brian brought up like with this has been a last minute thing that we put together this week. It happens every year, so maybe we should be anticipating this a few months in advance next year. So we can. We can work as a board to make sure it doesn't fall on Diane. Like Diane, you did a great job pulling this together last minute like this, but maybe the next year we can plan a little a little further in advance and and have it ready by now.
And I think we're I kind of accidentally prepared because some of this really just stem from the the ARPA fund requests. It does kind of mirror some of that. So I think we're fortunate in a sense. All right. So is there any motions to approve this?
I made a motion.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I believe I seconded, but I'll second it.
All right, very good. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I'm also I. Thank you. Thank you, Diane, and thank you, Jeff. Okay, agenda item number four, library construction update being presented by Brian Colony. Connolly, sorry, library trustee.
Great, thanks, Eric. So just wanted to let folks know that we, as far as the asbestos abatement in the building. Just we've got our contractor Bristol who had begun that work, removed the duck work. There was some sampling that found asbestos fibers outside of the. Area that they were remediating. So we did file a. Plan for remediation with the Department of Environmental Protection. We did get that plan approved back on Monday and what they said is we need to clean all the ducts, clean the mechanical room. And replace the carpet squares in the legacy library building. There, just to remind folks, there were no asbestos fibers found in the new wing and that's been polished off from that area. So. Bristol, who's the vendor and C H air project manager, coming up with the kind of cost and timing of that additional work, they'll have it either tomorrow or Monday. Bristol is ready to come on site on Monday to to begin that sort of work. And. We haven't got yet. We'll get this along with the cost, but how much additional time that might take for them. We're also looking at. You know, going to be looking at duct work in the existing mechanical room. D E P asked that to be cleaned, but we have to assess whether that should be cleaned or actually removed. And again, we'll we'll learn more about that in the next couple of days. So we thought we might have a budget estimate from that additional work at this meeting tonight. We're probably a couple of days away from being able to provide that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brian. Any questions from the board?
Just. Just uh one question. Paul, this uh asbestos abatement work, that that wasn't part of the original project for the library, wasn't?
No, it wasn't. It was, it was not in scope for the original project, Paul. It was, you know, it's upon discovering it, we've actually, you know, proceeded to do the work and, you know, funded out of the construction project, but it was not part of the original scope.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you very much, Brian. Okay, moving on, agenda item number five, um consideration of cap requests for FY23. Uh, we have two. We have Pine Hill School Committee, Don Fattori, I said anyway. And we have a Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee um for additional capital request. Is Don here to present?
Yes, I am. And I'm also joined by Kathy Smith, our interim superintendent, our Chair of the Sherburne School Committee, Nancy Cordell.
Hello.
And I believe Kate Potter will be joining us to represent the regional school committee.
Okay, um, I'm just trying to find you. Are you, there you are.
There on page two.
Yeah, I think I found that out.
Sorry, we were, we were joined, we were joined like this is meeting number two for us tonight. Um, so we yeah, we're here to sort of give you an uh an update on the Pine Hill Capitol and then to discuss the IMA agreement for the regionals, the regions capital for fiscal year twenty three. I believe you have Pine Hill on the agenda first, correct?
Correct.
Uh, so I provided in your package a sort of a summary of the projects that are being proposed for um Pine Hill. We have discussed these projects with the Sherburne School Committee. Um, at their November meeting, they approved seventy five thousand dollars with the flooring projects. Um, since November and the meeting we're going to have with them on Tuesday night, we have refined that list, the estimate that they'll approve on um Tuesday night is sixty eight thousand. The project includes replacing floors in floors in four classrooms and four offices. In the classrooms, we're using the um Ultra Quartz tile and in the carpet and in the uh office spaces, we're using carpet tiles. If you've been in Pine Hill recently, you'll see the new flooring that we've been using. So we're continuing to roll out the low maintenance of tile flooring uh versus the BCT that has to be stripped and waxed every year. Um, and the carpet tiles are actually a much better way for us to go because if we run into any spills or stains that we can't get out or we overly wear and tear on the, say, the main traffic patterns, we can just pop those tiles and replace them. So that's what we've been doing um in all our schools. You already have a lot of that flooring already in Pine Hill and we're just continuing to replace the old BCT um that's currently there.
Okay, um, any questions from the select board? And actually, let me go onto page one where the select board is. Any questions from the select board relevant to this? Oh, yeah, Paul?
I had more of a problem.
Was, uh, so next week, we're going to actually do a complete vote of the select board on uh the financial, non-financial items of the of the whole town meeting warrant. I I, you know, we've talked about this not just every year, but every week of every year. That, you know, well, we're going to do at the end, holistically, and I think it's safe to say, I think, I mean, does anyone on the board have any issues with this or any problems with this, I say?
Seems pretty straightforward. It's part of the plan that they've been executing for years.
Exactly. Seems like an opener to me as well.
We have to support our schools.
When you say next week though, do you mean the the twenty fourth or do you mean at the advisory public?
Twenty fourth, we usually vote on before the twenty sixth hearing. We'll vote on all our financial articles.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to confirm that.
Um, all right. So now is there a presentation or discussion about the Dover Sherburne?
Yeah, so uh this is a little different because this is um, you know, we're asking, you haven't seen us in the last couple of years come forward to the select board with a um IMA, which is the intermunicipal government or inter, intergovernment agreement, uh, which allows the towns to, our two member towns to choose how they want to fund their region's capital. The reason why is that the region actually has been funding their capital has been at such a level that we've been funding capital since fiscal year nineteen uh through our excess and deficiency, which is like our free cash. Um, as we're coming upon some of these larger capital projects, though, it goes beyond what we can fund here. Uh, and so you're seeing sort of the resurrection of the IMA. Uh, so this is something that we are bringing forward tonight with for, we're assuming a vote. Um, because it's important to get this IMA, we're actually presenting this same agreement to the Dover Select Board um next Thursday night. So the project that we are bringing forward to be funded is actually a roof restoration project, which includes the middle school, the gym and Lincoln Commons, which is also our cafeteria. Um, I want to preface it by saying that um uh we've had the um the good fortune that our uh previous director of facilities actually retired in August of twenty twenty. Uh, we obviously during the pandemic, we posted, we weren't successful in obtaining um a good candidate. So I actually hired a a retired facilities director from the town of Newton. He did the uh the Newton Public Schools. He worked with me on a part time basis all through last year and actually helped us get this project started. Uh, so when he came on board, uh, we engaged with a industry consultant to actually um inspect all of our Dover Sherburne buildings. Because as you know, in our onsite insight twenty year capital plan, almost all of our buildings and the schools are all calling for roof replacements at about the same, you know, five years. Um, and so we thought it was advantageous for us to go get a head start on that. So we started that work. Um, and we decided that the the roofs that were in the most need to go um uh and priority wise is the middle school and Lincoln Commons. Um, and so we have uh put this um out to bid. Um, it went out to bid in mid-January. The bids were closed on February fourth. Um, we did see a little bit of increase due, I think, to what's happening in the industry. Uh, we need a little bit of insulation work. We're told insulation costs have gone up thirty to fifty percent. Um, I think we're fortunate that we don't need a lot of insulation because a lot of roof replacement projects that uh are looking for that kind of materials are not going to be able to do, be done this summer. So I think we're fortunate in that realm. So we have um sent out a letter of intent for uh the the lowest bid. Uh, just to reiterate, I think I've provided it in your packet, but we are looking at doing a restoration versus a full replacement. I think I tried to give you that sort of the pros and cons of that. Uh, we were um deemed to be a a candidate. Actually, all of our roofs were deemed to be candidate for restoration due to we had very little um water spots that would mean that you need to pull up the whole base of the insulation and the and the membrane. Um, obviously, that's also um a a green option because if they had to pull up everything, obviously, I that the the regional school committee was very happy to hear that they would not be increasing what was being waste uh in the environment. Uh, it is a twenty year warranty with an estimated life of twenty five years. It's approximately half the cost of a full replacement. So from a return on investment, it is a very smart way to go. Um, and we're uh hoping that this will move forward because it will actually uh protect our buildings. We, we did do some repair work, but the middle school um itself does have, you know, some history of leaking. So we're excited to to get a new covering on top of that and not have to worry about leaks for hopefully at least twenty years. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Hold on, let me go to page one.
Eric?
Yep, Paul?
So I have signed these kind of intermunicipal agreements many times with Dover. I helped write them way back when. They are advantageous to both towns. It preserves our right to go to town meeting and to put if we decide that go that way, a ballot question for debt exclusion on the ballot and let the voters of the town make their decisions. We need to have this signed in order to accomplish that. Because otherwise, the borrowing is done by the region and not by us. And there's a different procedure which provides less less freedom for us, less, less democracy for us. So for those reasons, I would like to move to authorize this, the uh town of Sherburne to enter into the IMA with the town of Dover and the regional schools. So that the stage would be set for consideration of this item at town meeting and possibly at the ballot box.
Okay.
I want to ask some questions first.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. And and this is a vote to support this because it needs to tell me an approval, right? I mean, yeah, yeah. All IMAs do, I believe.
Yeah.
Does not just us.
Needs approval. The capital item needs voter approval.
Yes.
Yes.
IMA does not need town meeting approval?
Not this one.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so here we're just voting on the IMA, not the capital.
Right, before we, could I ask some?
Go on, George. Go please.
Don, hi, Don, how are you?
Hi.
Just wanted to um ask a quick question. I know we've talked about when the roof replacements come up. Um, did you, are you looking at putting solar panels on either Lincoln Commons with this project or?
We, we are not looking to engage any of the rooftops here for a solar panel. If we move forward with solar panel here, we decided we were going to do it potentially in parking lots or open space. Um, if you looked at an overview of our rooftops here, we have a tremendous amount of HVAC equipment already on the rooftops. Um, and so it did not make sense for us to go that way. And we've had, you know, we've talked to a lot of consultants and um, you know, like I said, I've got my, my consultant uh director of facilities from Newton and I have a new director of facilities that we hired from the outside and they both agree that that's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Yeah, I know we talked about it back when I was on advisory at one point, so.
Yeah. And it doesn't make sense in our, in our situation.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
So just one other comment on the question of the amount.
Yep.
The, the amount that they were looking at is is like one point five million, but this portion that's allocated to the town of Sherburne is much less than that. It's forty three, none of that. So could you tell us that amount?
Yep, it's a, it's an um item number two. So it is, your allocation is forty four point six one percent. So it's seven hundred and two thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
And so again, my motion is not to, to address the work or the amount out of respect for what Eric just said, that we defer to the next meeting. Those issues of supporting this at town meeting. My motion is only about entering into it, this IMA with the town of Dover and the regional schools, which is a necessary precursor to this whole process. If we don't have that, then we don't have the, the right for this town meeting to vote on these things.
We, we got it, Paul. We've, we've gone.
And and I will be, I will say if you, the agreement that should have been in your packet and actually the whole, there's a whole paragraph that it's all subject, you know, all subject to all the other stuffs that we have to um.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
It seems straight for, I mean, I'm not a lawyer reading, but this seems pretty straightforward to me. Okay, we have a motion um to approve the uh call IMA or actually intergovernmental agreement, whatever it is. I'll have a second for that.
Yeah, I'll second it. And I think part of the reason too is because sometimes Dover pays for it with free cash and we, we probably would bond it. So I second Paul's motion.
All right, uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Um, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, you'll make a vote on the capital item. Um, and I would keep saying next week, but it's only in two weeks.
Okay.
Well, could I, should I just add one thing to that, which is to authorize the uh town administrator to sign for the town?
There's five spots here. We should assign every one of our names.
Typically, we're in person and we actually get you all to sign it and do the seal of an item of the meeting. So we will, I'll coordinate with Diane to.
We could, she could leave it at the town hall. We can go in there. It's not a, it's not like we can't stop by town hall and sign it.
True.
Yeah, there's no hard, I mean, the deadline is basically like after town meeting pretty much, yeah.
Right, so at some point, we can get in there and sign it.
Yeah, that's easy. I agree. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
For your time of this. I'm going to go to agenda item number six, um consideration of draft warrant articles continued from previous meeting. We have council of aging, citizen petition, uh finance, uh director by law, town minister by law and a further discussion on paving Rockwood Street. Let's take them in that order as presented. Excuse me, council of aging, Pete Hoagland, are you here, Pete?
I am. Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, as you may or may not be aware, the Sherburne Council on Aging is only one of three towns in the Commonwealth of Mass that operates as a supervisory board versus an advisory board. And in recent training sessions that were divided by the town, it was noted and suggested that the changes be made to conform to the norm. By way of definition, a supervisory board is a decision-making board where the decisions are binding on the council's director and the organization. As opposed to an advisory board where it provides non-binding advice and board members are not authorized to act for or make decisions on behalf of the organization. An advisory board is a problem-solving model to provide analysis and strategic insights to inform the CIA COA staff. In order for Sherburne to change the council maging from a supervisory board to advisory board, the town bylaws need to be changed. The current time by law, town by law language relating to the council aging states as follows. The council may appoint such clerks and other employees as it may require. Now, the proposed change to this item, which was proposed by town council, goes as follows. There shall be a director of the council on aging appointed by the town administrator upon recommendation by the council on aging. The director shall hire all other staff positions for the council on aging. The director should be supervised by and shall report directly to the town administrator. I'd like to also mention that the council aging itself has discussed this change at its last board meeting and voted unanimously to recommend and support this change in the town bylaw.
All right.
There you have it. There you have it.
Yeah, any questions on the board? And excuse me while I go back on page one. I thought people had the camera and automatically get bumped to the top, but anyways.
I know.
Yeah, I know. Um, any questions? Anything on this?
No, I think it makes sense. I don't think there's a reason to this long meeting, so. Because we're going to, we're going to vote to support. Are we doing the articles that are non-financial as we see them or?
You know, that's a very good question. Um, what did we do on like the citizen petition we saw? Did we vote on that?
I wasn't there that Saturday, so I don't know.
Yeah.
The environmental petition?
No, honestly, I don't mind frankly vote uh voting on the um, the non-financial articles um as as they go. You know, if we did that in the past, we'll have Diane kind of look up what we've done and haven't done, make a checklist. But I wouldn't mind banging this one out to seem straightforward, so.
So I'll move that we, we support this.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. It reminded me in the past, go have them coming up with some additions. Does the, we do take votes. Okay, we do take votes. Sorry, I've only done this five times. Maybe three more. Um, all right, uh, citizen petition article, to amend the open space subdivision plan, Rebecca Honeywell has a citizen's petition. Rebecca, I saw you on before. Unfortunately, you're on my page too.
I believe this is, this article thirty one.
Yes, I can see you.
Article thirty one.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, Rebecca.
I have a little presentation prepared. Should I put it up on the screen?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay, hold on. Sorry. Final, sorry, thanks. Hi, I'm Rebecca Honeywell and I'm here to discuss a citizen's petition. There are twenty two signatures. And this is designed to make two small changes to strengthen the open space subdivision by law, which, as you know, was very well written and a lot of hard work went into. But it's possible there are two small spots where an unintended consequence may um occur. So these two proposed changes are designed to simply allow Sherburne to have similar standards to all of our neighbors. Ninety eight percent of towns in Massachusetts have similar processes in place. The, this is the wording of the warrant article, which is exactly how it would be if these. The, this is the wording of the warrant article, which is exactly how it would be if these implemented changes take place. But I won't go into that detail. But basically it will bring the drinking water standards into compliance with the existing drinking water laws as well as environmental assessment procedures to be in compliance with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, which was just put into effect in January of twenty twenty-two. Specifically, why does this matter and why were we even considering this in Sherburne? Well, in a subdivision, we will be, because we have a hundred percent private water supply drinking wells and an unusual geology that leads to a sixty percent surface wetlands. This increases risks of contamination across property lines. And it also is not possible at the current time in a subdivision with cluster zoning to meet the setback requirements of our current Board of Health regulations. The changes that are proposed in this warrant article would our standard procedures in ninety-eight percent of the other towns in Massachusetts in order to anticipate concerns, create safe and effective plans and obviate risks and prevent, and I should say, protect public health. Envir- environmental health impact reporting at the permitting phase of a project is a standard procedure in every other town. We do require environmental he- health impact evaluation in our current regulations, but it is not done at the permitting phase. So this is simply requesting that it be done at the permitting phase because that allows the, the, the affected boards to give input to help to produce designs that are effective and safe and that apply to the individual circumstances of every project. Unfortunately, after the fact, once a permit is, is given, the residents and the abutters suffer in the, in the absence of statutory protection that forces litigation. People don't want to sue their, their neighbors and they definitely, the town doesn't want to be sued either. It also is a problem for contractors and developers. After the fact, it raises costs, it causes delays and it complicate things that are frustrating for everybody in bulk. So this would be beneficial for everybody. In addition, it will protect public health. And obviously, my main thesis is that will, this will prevent unintended consequences, costly litigation and unnecessary conflicts. In a subdivision, the resources will be shared. So what that means is that the private water supplies, which are wells, which will be shared and the septic systems will be shared. So the increased demand on the natural resources and the water table as well as increased output, which could potentially increase risks of contamination in a butter's wells or in the residence of a, of a subdivision. Um, when it is not possible for the, a particular subdivision, so it might not be all, but if a subdivision does not have the ability to meet the current Board of Health setback requirements, then this would request that a cluster zone that does not meet our setback requirements and that also doesn't meet the state thresholds for a public water supply be monitored more closely in order to ensure safe drinking water that complies with drinking water standards which exist at the state level and in ninety-eight percent of the towns already in Massachusetts. And they exist in our town schools and our town offices already because those meet the thresholds for a public water supply. But it's possible that a subdivision that doesn't meet those thresholds, the future residents or the abutters could be put at risk and not even know it. Or it would unfortunately force litigation between homeowners and their neighbors. So in conclusion, if these two changes are able to be implemented, it would help us to avoid unintended consequences. It would increase the value of this sub, of the subdivision bylaw without increasing costs and while decreasing liability. It would bring Sherburne to have the same standards as other towns in Massachusetts. It would improve protections for shared private drinking water sources, which are not regulated by the state. And it will decrease liability for the town. In my opinion, this will help to protect our property values. It will help to protect the individual white rights of property owners. And it will protect the natural environment and the shared resources. That's it. This is just a summary slide of everything I've discussed in case you want to look at it. Are there any questions?
Yes, I know. I mean, I was, I, I just my planning board and just work background, I follow a lot of the, I get more involved with the subdivision ones. And I was just a little confused by this. I almost wanted like another chance to look at it. I don't know if I'm ready to vote tonight, to be honest with you. I want to talk to a few people on opinions on this. One of my, one of my issues, so the only issue I ever had with the subdivision, there's a cluster subdivision by law, was if, was the language almost mandated over a traditional subdivision. And if we put more requirements on the cluster subdivision, I'd like to see loosened up some of that language. And Mary Ann, maybe you can remind me, what does the language say? It says that you have to do this unless you prove that a regular subdivision is somehow better or something like that. Obviously, I'm talk.
Is, is, is environmentally better. And that would include water and, and, and septic and sewer.
But it definitely, sorry, Mary.
No, no, that, that's good. I'll talk.
You definitely included that the regulations should apply. That is absolutely included, however.
Regulations, yeah.
Yes, however, unfortunately, when the setbacks are not possible to achieve, it won't be possible to use our regulations. And this is something that hopefully the Board of Health will be addressing and updating in the near future. And because most of these will be below the threshold of a public water supply, it will still be under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. So the Board of Health's regulations would be in effect.
Mary Ann, remind me, what's the smallest lot size you can make under the current cluster subdivision?
Uh, there, uh, there is no, uh, there is no limit on, on lot size. It can be small. But, uh, but should I just comment on this really quickly now?
I would like your opinion on this. Obviously, you are the creator of the, of the cluster subdivision. I'd definitely like to value it.
The, the co-creator, I would say, because, uh, in, in doing the cluster subdivision idea, of course, protection of overall groundwater is very high priority and that's a high priority for all of us. It's existential for the town. And some subdivision designs, it is true of what you say, Rebecca. They, they fall in a sort of gap between the, uh, the amount needed for a public water supply to be put into place and monitored by DEP and the private water supply rules that the Board of Health has. Uh, but the Board of Health does have, also has rules for, uh, for sharing of wells and sharing of septic up to a certain point. But you're right that there is a gap there. And, uh, we discussed this at length with members of the Board of Health, David Sossen, Daryl and, and Mark Orem in writing this bylaw. And the conclusion was that, uh, after a lot of input from them, there, they recognized that to cover every kind of open space subdivision, uh, you would have to have a revision of the, of the local Board of Health regulations. And we left it at that. In fact, in the meantime, until that was done, it's clear that some subdivision plans will not be approved by Board of Health and they, they'll never be possible. So it's, to make all of them approvable by the Board of Health is probably not realistic. Some of them simply will not be. But, uh, the setbacks are not any different from what would be the case uh, in the current Board of Health rules. It should be noted though, that septic systems or wells can be located on the open space in the open space subdivision bylaw. So it is possible to move them farther apart, not necessarily clustering them closely. So the reason that we didn't include specific language about setbacks and, uh, water supply, uh, limitations and numbers in the bylaw is that it's not legal to do so because that's the Board of Health's bailiwick, not the planning board. You can't write new Board of Health rules into a zoning bylaw. Those have to come from the Board of Health. So that's why it was included. That's why it was written the way it was written. And the only other point I want to make is that, um, fulfilling the zoning bylaw is only the first of many hurdles before a project is approved for building. It has to go through the board, the, the, first of all, the, the planning board subdivision rules and regulations has all kinds of regulations. Uh, one of which, one of many is section three point three point six, if you want to note it, that refers to the Board of Health Authority and states that an environmental impact analysis is required before any building takes place. And in that section, we refer to specifically refer to the Board of Health, EHIR requirements and the Board of Health Regulations, uh, Section Three. That was done with Board of Health approval. So then after we get through the, the, uh, planning board regs, Board of Health approval and CONCOM approval is still required, like always. So basically, there's nothing in the bylaw as we wrote it, I think, that reduces the, uh, safety of our water supply or reduces, uh, the ability of the Board of Health rules to govern how things are built or not built here. Ironically, I think this amendment, in fact, uh, would diminish the Board of Health Authority by writing a new board, a new well and, and septic.
No, no, that's not true at all. There, there is a place, I'm sorry.
I mean, you're, you're proposing that we write these regulations into the zoning bylaw. And all I'm saying is that the way to do it is to write the Board of Health Regulations to cover, uh, subdivisions that you think would be worth building. Of course, if you don't want to write those regulations, and I know it takes time and it's a lot of work to write regulations. But, uh, if they were not changed and the, the Board of Health Regulations that we have now stamped, then, uh, that's what applies to a subdivision, uh, proposal. And if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Can I speak? I just.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so actually, um, I'm sorry, but the way it's written does not require that environmental health impact reporting as part, prior to the permit. And recently it came before the board and we were told that this is how the open space subdivision is written and by the lawyer who represented this individual. And so we, that was actually one of the things which precipitated this because it's missing, it's absent from this regulation. And obviously, um, I believe, I believe it was an unintended, something that was unintended. And so this was simply requiring as part of the permitting phase instead of a requirement after the permit, uh, which is the way it appears to be written.
What permit are you referring to? Rebecca, which permit are you referring to?
Well, there.
Uh, let, let me just.
You can look at the, you can look at the two edits. There specifically, there were two specific points in your regulation which put, increase the risks and potentially could allow um, something that would be at risk and put the Board of Health in a position of a challenge. This would simply address those two issues without changing the intent or the effect of this, uh, bylaw. It does not, it doesn't write a new regulation. We obviously have to write our regulations. But it, it simply increases the protections to be, to cover that gap between where the, when the sub, when the setbacks can't apply and when it's below the threshold of a public water supply. So it's the, it's the part where it's difficult to enforce the regulations and hopefully we'll be able to update those regulations, um, to address the issue as well. But it's, it is written in your, uh, bylaw in this way. You can see that the text of the existing bylaw and the proposed change and, but I hope, and I, and I also understand that we, um, this all have the timing and there were multiple issues, things that were taking place. Um, I'm hoping to talk to you soon and I was planning to reach out to you so we could discuss some of these issues, um, in more detail. And also I'm on the agenda of, of the Board of Health this week. But it was the timing of some issues that, um, came up that prevented the proper, um, evaluation and communication prior to the presentation. I didn't realize that these presentations in front of the select board and the advisory were so early. So I missed that opportunity.
Oh, that's okay. You know, I, I would, I would love to talk to you. I would really enjoy it. No problem. But I do want to point out that, uh, in our rules and regulations that are now in the rules and regulations, subdivision rules and regulations for the planning board, uh, we wrote in everything we could to support the Board of Health, EHIR.
I know.
And then, uh, in a section that says the, the projections, it, it asks, it says you need to have a board of, you need to have a, a impact assessment through the planning board that mirrors exactly the EHIR that will be required for the Board of Health. And it says, projections shall be made in accordance with affluent evaluations specified by the Environmental Health Impact Report and other requirements of the Board of Health Regulations, Section Three. And that's in our planning board rules and regulations. And that was written in collaboration with Board of Health. So I.
I know. I think, I believe that this was an oversight because I also was involved with that evaluation. And I don't think that it, uh, we didn't, we, this recent weakness was exposed, which drew it to our attention.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk offline.
Yeah, we'll talk further. Don't worry.
Yeah, I definitely like. Me personally, as I indicated before, I'd like to do a little more homework before I vote on this and get a little more into the weeds on it. Uh, I'm glad you're going to the Board of Health. Frankly, I, I, I'd kind of like to see how other boards vote on it before the select board actually endorses anything like this, to be honest with you. In particular, zoning bylaw should come from the planning board. Did you approach the planning board for these, um, not just approval of this, but even for them to sponsor, um, this bill? Because they're the ones.
Yes, I hope that, I hope that we would do it in together. I didn't realize that the, the timing of this whole thing is so early, or maybe this isn't early, but, um, because the town meeting was in May, I did, I under, I did not realize that all of these hearings and votes happened so early. So that was the original plan.
Rebecca, did any of the Board of Health or did you ask any of the Board of Health to co-sign this?
Um, there, I'm on the agenda on Wednesday and we'll be discussing it together. We'll see. But no, the, um, there were a lot of, um, people who were interested in this at the time that it was written and we decided that I should come formally in front of the Board of Health.
You can probably unshare your, your screen now, Rebecca.
I see Paul has.
Yes.
Yep.
So first, let me say to, to Rebecca, that I know how much you care about the town and environmental issues in the town. So I very much appreciate your putting in the time and effort to think of this and to bring it forward. I also think that we, all of us who work for the town are very concerned about the quality of our water supply, our groundwater and our, our drinking water. So I commend you for, uh, again, uh, wanting to focus on this. It's, it sounds like there needs to be more discussion between you, the planning board, the Board of Health and any other parties. And so what I would like to do is to encourage you to do a round of, of discussions with all of them. See if you can't work out your, your differences or your, if there are differences. And collaboratively, put together something that. And collaboratively put together something that protects the, the the quality of the drinking water and these kinds of subdivisions fills the gap that has been brought to your attention by that developer and have come back to us maybe with, uh, what could be a motion under this article that would be, are refining it to reflect all the views of all these other, uh, stakeholders.
Okay, that sounds great.
Any other questions on the board?
Well, I would just say that I think it's pretty unrealistic to do that by March twenty-sixth. My view is this probably should be considered a year from now if you want to have it all the input.
Now, I don't mind delaying frankly, our vote to support it even after advisory frankly. Advisory is really the financial votes, to be honest with you. We can vote supporting articles almost up until town meeting to some degree, you know?
Just one other quick.
Well, the only thing is advisory, right, excuse me, Mary Ann, advisory writes up the warrant though, and they write up a recommendation. So that's based, and it's due, is due very shortly after the advisory public hearing. So, so they will have to, uh, either vote no action because we haven't heard enough yet. I, I just think it's not realistic to get the Board of Health and the planning board input and then revise it by March twenty-sixth. That's just the personal assessment.
And I think, and as Jeff said, it's not just the financial articles that country votes on, they vote on every article and make a recommendation to the town.
Before I recognize Daryl, I will recognize Daryl. I'm assuming I haven't heard him make a motion on this yet, so I'm assuming we're, um, probably not ready to run this. Okay, Daryl, go ahead. Daryl?
Is muted.
Daryl, you're muted if you don't know.
Yep. Uh, so I have a question. How much of a revision is permitted from the original?
Well, I can answer that. If you want, uh, depends on the extent of the revision. So I'd have to see it in order to tell, because this is what I do for a living. I'd have to see it before I can tell you whether it went too far or not.
Okay.
Eric, could I add one thing? I just want to make clear that this, this gap in, uh, Board of Health Regulations that comes up because of open space subdivision bylaws was recognized when we were writing the bylaw. And that's exactly, uh, what Daryl and I and, and, and Mark and others uh, discussed in, at, at great length. And, uh, the reason that a revised Board of Health bylaw was more of health regs were not put in the zoning bylaw is that they belong in the Board of Health regs. It's up to the Board of Health. And that was decided in, back at the time.
And Board of Health regs can happen at any time. They don't need town meeting approval.
Right.
Um, okay. It sounds like we're kind of wrapped up here. Thank you very much for, um, the information there Rebecca. Um, and as much I hate to kick things down the road, I think this is a little, I would like a little time in this, um, you know, see how the other boards, at least, at least, uh, Border Health, uh, discusses on Wednesday and, um, and no more by then our next meeting. All right. If there's any other comments, what's that?
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. No comments. I'm moving on to the next one, um, for the Finance Director bylaw. And it's a little different and that's actually, this would be essentially our, the select boards, this would be our recommendations. So this is, uh, this vote won't just be to, um, you endorse this or not, but basically, you know, is this what we want to go before town meeting? Um, I don't want to talk about, I believe George Morrell had, um, done so, done mark, some, uh, markups to both the Finance Director and the Town Administrator. So I don't know if George, you want to talk about it?
Let's start with the Finance Director. Uh, there's two, there are two totally separate recommendations here. Um, the Finance Director by law, um, I'm proposing that we change it, that the Finance Director would be uh, reporting directly to the Town Administrator. I feel as a volunteer board that meets every two weeks. It's not appropriate to have a department head reporting to a volunteer board like that. They should. I look at it more as a corporate structure where in most corporations, the CFO reports to the CEO because their day-to-day operations. Um, we hire the Town Administrator to oversee the departments that the select board oversees. If you look at, if you do look at the TA bylaw, it actually says the TA should be over, should be um, supervising all departments over that fall under the select board. So in my uh, interpretation of that, that includes the Finance Director. I think, uh, successful, as we hire a new Finance Director or it, once, once this position comes up, um, we should be making it a position that can succeed. And I think by having a day-to-day supervisor in the office, that, that would help. And that's my main idea behind this.
And I just want to add, I just want to add, uh, point of comment where I look at it. Um, not just as a private structure, a corporation, I look at it as government entity. So the city of Framingham has a Chief Financial Officer. Chief Financial Officer, um, uh, goes to the mayor. Does not go to the City Council, does, goes straight to the mayor, which essentially serves and actually is even underneath the, um, Chief Operating Officer. So it goes like Mayor, Chief Operating Officer and blah, 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 blah. And I think that's very consistent with this proposed structure. And I look at town and addict, town, addict actually has a, a assistant town, town manager. I think it's assistant town administrator or finance, which serves as a CFO. So most town governments that I've looked at actually have whoever that chief financial person is go, um, essentially underneath the Chief Executive Officer, um, is that. So I certainly support this. I will say though, like for example, like a Framingham, Framingham can hire an auditor. So they have a checks and balances in there. And I think that's, um, I think it's very consistent and I fully agree with you that this is, um, that we cannot realistically expect a hired professional staff and issue one to, you know, answer to us and answer to a volunteer board. And I think you get more direct oversight and better operation going to, um, essentially the highest, uh, professional employee. Yeah, Jeff, go ahead. I suspect.
I think it's a question of degree. I'm, I'm not supportive of this because I like the independence of the Finance Director. I don't think it's that they're not reporting, they're getting direction on sort of day-to-day things from the Town Administrator. I view that as different from a reporting relationship. So in other words, I don't expect, you know, that they're not going to talk to the Town Administrator or not take direction from them. But I, I still like the idea of a independent, um, financial director.
So I want to address the issue of, of, um, public agencies, governments, the way the general laws provide for town governments and city governments is that the Chief Executive Officer is an elected official in cities or elected board in towns. So in Sherburne, the Chief Executive Officer is the Board of Select. And the basic concept is one of democracy that you want your Chief Executive Officer to be elected. Sure, there, there are places in the world, like Russia and other countries where you.
Really, that's, that's a terrible reference. Don't go there.
But, I mean, could I, could I, could I finish?
Not when you make ridiculous references like that. That's absurd.
Help it finish, yeah.
The point is that, that the elected officials have to be the ones responsible to the voters. Not an appointed official. What the Town Administrator is, is the Chief Operating Officer. What it says in the bylaw is he's the Chief Administrative Officer. Because he's the Chief Administrative Officer, the buck still stops with the elected officials for the overall direction of the government. There are three stools, if you, three legs to the stool of town government. A Board of Selectmen has the Town Administrator reporting to it, the Finance Director reporting to it, and the Town Council. Those three legs are very important in order to to make sure the government operates properly. For example.
Break it up a little bit, Paul, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe we can move on to.
Yeah, I think we get the point. Um, I mean, I, I, the thing is I, I don't think there's anything in, um, in the actual state law that says this has to happen. As I said, I cited two communities, larger communities which have this happen. Be interesting to see what Dover does or something like that. I could probably look it up.
The best way for a government to operate is to preserve those three legs of the stool. If you take one leg out and you try and balance on just two legs, that creates a risk for the community as a whole. I would leave it alone. I think the way it's currently written, it makes it plain that the Town Administrator is supposed to coordinate with the Town Finance Director. It's worked fine. The fundamental problem with our finance department is that we have all these elected officials who are responsible only to the voters and not to the government as a whole. Changing the reporting requirements of the Finance Director doesn't address those issues. And therefore is not really addressing the issues that the Collins Report brought up or Department of Revenue Report brought up about what needed to be done in the town. So this is a ref, we're so-called change or reform that's addressing a problem that doesn't exist. And I would say it's not, should not be adopted.
Okay.
Can I respond to a couple of things?
Let me make a quick response. I'm pretty much going to say, well, then I'm going to back you up. I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure it has worked fine. I think, yeah, I'm not sure it has worked fine. I think it's an easy sentence to say, but I don't think it's worked fine at all. I will, first of all, you know, if there's performance issues with, with, uh, with this, uh, Finance Director, it's almost impossible for us to, uh, determine that as a, as a volunteer board and to and almost do anything about it. Whereas if you have someone who works with them day-to-day, that person, him or her, can actually make an assessment of the performance of that person. George, what were you going to say?
Who said it? Who said exactly? It hasn't worked fine.
Yeah.
I mean, our, we've had some major problems over the last few years. And by having a day-to-day person overseeing the Finance Director, that's, I think, the problem. And I'm seeing it and I hear from not just, it's not coming from me. It's coming from people who worked in town hall. It's coming from people who have seen this day-to-day that there's a problem that we need oversight over the Finance Director position. We're a volunteer ball. Paul, are you in town hall every day? Are you, are you every single day seeing what's happening? No, none of us are. We have other jobs. The PA is, that's who should be overseeing this. It's a very important position as a Finance Director to have a volunteer board that meets every two weeks be their oversight.
So can I respond to that?
I'm just going to say, and it's consistent with other government structures. I do want to say it, but go ahead.
And it's not just Russia. It's Natick and Framingham. So don't bring Russia up again because that's just giving, that, that's, uh, uh, that's actually insulting, Paul.
So the General Court has adopted a Director of Finance bylaw. That's a local option that we could adopt. We did not adopt. If we adopted that bylaw, that would create a strong Finance Director who appoints all these other finance officials and builds a finance team and works very well. But our Finance Director is a homemade version. So we haven't opted for the government reforms that is available to us and to towns like Natick, Framingham and all, all the others. We have this weakened Finance Director. If we had, if we go with the state model, that's somebody that's appointed by us, reports to us. That's the model.
Well, I'd like to see that by law. I'm not sure model. I, I want people to know that Finance Director is essentially a town accountant. Used to be called the town accountant for years. He strengthened a bit. And I just looked it up. Dover's town accountant reports to the Town Administrator. So I mean, I, I, I almost would challenge the supporters of this to find anywhere where accountant or Finance Director reports to the Board of Selectmen. Yeah. So I mean, um, I'm still supportive of this. It's consistent with other towns. Yeah, Mary Ann, I think you're the swing vote anyway. So.
Well, I, I, I may not help, but anyway, uh, my, my thought is that I think we're talking about two sort of levels of oversight. That is, uh, in the day-to-day uh, function of the, of the Town Administrator in town hall, you know, interacting with other, uh, with other town hall employees and keeping track of things that are coming in and out of the Administrator's office. I mean, I can see that there are certain things that the Town Administrator should be supervising uh, in the town, in the town, in the accountant, in the Finance Director's work. And there are other things that perhaps they shouldn't. Uh, like the, the overall budget and how, how money is allocated and the kind of things I think that George has in mind. I agree, it should be, uh, to the CEO, which is basically us. So, uh, I, 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 maybe I, I'm not a, I'm a swing vote in that I kind of agree with parts of both sides.
So what about changing it to say reports to both? The Town Administrator and the Board of Select. How about that for a compromise?
And maybe defining a little bit, um, of what sorts of things they would report to the Town Administrator on, like, you know, uh, uh, day-to-day, uh, questions and maybe the Town Administrator would be a sort of buffer.
But with municipal government, when you talk about the budgets and everything, we're the ones, well, to actually, the citizens are the ones that vote on the budget. We don't vote on.
And, and that shouldn't change.
And, and the, and the advisory makes advice, gives advice on it. And the Finance Director goes to, you know, the Finance Director does a lot of the work around that, but it really comes down to the citizens, not us. Not the, however you want to defend, define it. But I think on a day-to-day, I'm talking about on a day-to-day basis. They have questions. They, they need supervisory. They need, maybe they have questions on the way they're working with a certain board. They, they need that day-to-day COO, if that's, if that's the more appropriate term. You're right. The C, instead of CEO, it should be COO. They have that COO to go to every day. And as Eric said, that's the way it's set up in Natick where the CFO goes to the COO and, and they have somebody to, to report to, to, to answer to every day that, that, um, kind of guides them in the right direction. When it comes to budgeting, no, they're not making, I mean, the Finance Director is not making any decisions. The town is.
So George, what about trying to put together a compromise that, uh, has us having act, direct access to the Finance Director?
Which we do. We're actually the ones employing the person too. That's the, we're the ones hiring it.
Can I just finish the idea to have the Town Administrator responsible for day-to-day activity? And have the big picture items be those that the Finance Director can report directly to us. So the Finance Director has an idea to reform town government and the Town Administrator doesn't like it. I don't want to see the CFO feel, I can't bring it to the board because my boss tells me no. Well, I want to be able to keep that, that avenue open. Isn't there some language that we could reach agreement on? So that the board would be united, all five of us, and yet would accomplish what you want and would preserve what I want.
Yeah. I think one thing, um, to make it easier on us is we give the TA, you know, financial goal, we're, we're supposed to give the TA financial goals and goals every year, and then they pass it on to the Finance Director. I, I mean, the way that you're suggesting, I think, I mean, I feel like all the directors have direct access to us. Sean, Colleen, the DPW Director, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, they have direct, I mean, even though they report to the TA, they have direct access to us. This wouldn't change that.
Well, I mean, it's more than access.
They have a, but they have a supervisor every day instead of a volunteer board. That's the change.
I think it's a question of degree here. I, I mean, I, we certainly aren't, don't plan to sit in town hall and tell them how to do something every day, but it's a question of degree. So I still disagree. I would rather have the Finance Director report to the select board and take day-to-day guidance and, and I hope for supervision, but direction from the Town Administrator rather than have it be a reporting relationship. But it's a question of degree.
Yeah. To me, it's a question about, um, evaluating performance. It is. It's not, it's not going to be effective if you don't have the direct line management. And already Sherburne has a weird flat management all throughout. So we talked about elective positions and stuff like that. It's one of probably the flattest forms of, uh, government I've ever seen, to be honest with you. And, uh, I, I always go to a more hierarchy, more classic, straightforward. This person reports to that person, that person reports to that person, da-da-da-da-da-da. And it just makes for cleaner things. If I go back, I mean, I. And it just makes for cleaner things. If I go back, I mean, I'm not gonna say too much in a public session, but if you go back and look at like, you know, HR issues we had in the past and so on like that. So many results from the not being unclear on aligned management. I I like this language. I mean, like I said, I I wanna, Mary Ann, thanks, because you will be the swing vote on this. You know, I think it's consistent with the communities, the towns. I'm I'm almost in favor of going back and calling this an accountant, to be honest, because that is more consistent with our towns call them. I mean. Framing is big enough that he have a chief financial officer and an accountant. You know, Dover has an accountant, Hallson has accountant.
But one thing to add to that, Eric, I think one of the most important components here is. One issue we've had as a select board, as long as I've been on the select board, is we don't do our performance evaluations. Having finance director reporting to the TA, the TA is going to perform their their, it's the TA's duty. To perform their performance evaluation.
They but they never get done.
I know.
Not been done for years.
Hopefully, when we hire a new town administrator, they will do the performance evaluations that they're supposed to do.
And they'll have an HR consultant to help them do it.
Exactly.
Hopefully, yes.
The only caveat to that, George, is I think we need to do ours too on the town administrator.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we can't even do that one. Why do we? I mean, we shouldn't have.
Well, that's not a good reason. The reason is we should do our job too. Yes, I hear what you're saying.
We're we're unpaid volunteers versus we hire a town administrator for a lot of money to administer things like this.
Like the record is Mary, she's gonna decide if it goes forward or not.
That's the swing boat. You better give me the floor. I I think there there is some language that could be added to George's revision. That would allow, that would provide this sort of direct. You know. Big picture access and whenever needed access directly to select board, bypassing the town administrator. So I don't know what that language is, but I think we can, we can, we can do both and we'll all go home happy.
I agree with you. That that makes sense. So let's um, let me. Since I did these initial revisions, let me see if I can add in maybe another line item that says. The the finance director would have direct access to the select board to discuss budgetary issues or financial issues.
Yeah, I like something like that.
It's an easy solution that 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 would work.
Does that work for your?
And all circulated, and then we can vote on it at our next meeting.
And it could be that Paul will have some language that would make.
Exactly. If anybody else has any of the revisions, I welcome the more red lines on this, so.
Yeah, I think we're better off being united on this. Let's see if we can develop a consensus.
Okay.
Okay.
But can we move on to the town administrator one then?
All right, Ed.
Okay, so I made a couple of changes here. The first and the very first paragraph. We handcuffed ourselves with this bylaw by saying we had to have a three-year contract effective June fifteenth. And I think it makes sense a- as we saw. I mean, we've, I gotta be careful what I say, like, we just gotta be careful that we don't set ourselves up. To put ourselves in a bad position. So I don't know, Paul, you're a lawyer, maybe you have better language for this, but I think we need to leave it a little more open that. If we decide as a select word, we want to give somebody a one-year contract, we should have the right to do that instead of the way that it reads reads now.
So I agree entirely. The fortune on this one.
That's is, did I write that lang? I'm not a lawyer, so I mean, is that language okay the way I changed that? Do you, do you think that worked?
It looked all right to me, but we're gonna have it reviewed by town council anyway.
Yep.
And then the other changes I made were because we're proposing hiring an HR director and an IT director. So I changed a little bit of the language around those two sections. And I I I don't know if anybody has any comments on those, but it was more that they're going to appoint somebody rather than just taking on the responsibilities themselves.
So the only only issue I had with a little bit is I know we've talked about the HR director thing, blah, blah, blah. And I've done quite a bit of research, especially since Paul's discussion four weeks ago. That, you know, pretty much every town I looked, I mean, every town I looked at, the town administrator acts as the HR director. We may outsource some of that. It still has to come from someone, be a town administrator, assistant town administrator, talk about making a stipend with it. By taking out of here, now our time bylaws are silenced. What about HR director? And I'm not fully sure I'm ready to pull the trigger and actually change our bylaws and we're moving out of here. That's that's the only reservation I have. I don't know if other people thoughts.
Oh, if I could.
Yep.
I support what George has done. So George and I can agree and sometimes disagree, but I still love him, so. Don't want anybody to think just because we're, we get passionate, we're not the, we're not good friends. The. Issue here is. Many of the towns that I've worked with give this HR function to the assistant town manager. And I I see. Lot of good results for that because essentially the HR function. That really is the hardest part is a lot of paperwork. And the paperwork has to be exact. There's so many laws now that have to be complied with. So many calculations and so on. To have a town administrator essentially have to be in his office or her office. And working on paperwork, I'd rather have a town administrator attending advisory hearings, attending select board hearings. Being. Available to the public and so on. So I'd I'd like to see it that the town. The the assistant town manage. Administrator. But rather than make that decision today, I think if you take it out of saying that it has to be the town administrator, it opens up the option to us. Yeah, we can assign it to the town administrator. Or we could assign it to the assistant town administrator. Or we can hire these outfits that are out there, the HR on demand where you. You pick up the phone and you call them like, like, like some cities and towns have town council that's inside as an employee. And there are other cities and towns that have council where you pick up the phone and you call them and they're so they're on demand. So you can do the same thing with HR. There's a lot of HR services out there. So to give us that flexibility, I'm not advocating at this point.
Okay. Yeah, he cut out again. He cut out again. So I guess I guess Paul's in favor of that. What are other people's thoughts on? I get my only thought is. I actually agree. It can go either one, town administrator, assistant town administrator. I I like to hire a consultant, but I want the consultant making the final decisions and ultimately needs to come from a staff member that works with them, you know, day-to-day. I've said it before. But the rest of bylaws are silent. I almost think you almost have to modify another part of the by, another bylaw somewhere that simply says like. HR director can be appointed by the board of selectmen or something like that. Do you know what I mean? Taking it out now makes it just silent. Yeah, that's that's my only issue. I'm not dead set against it. It's just something I think worthy of discussion.
Yeah, and that that was my main thing. And I was more passionate about the finance director one. This one. I just, based on what we were talking about on the budget side, I feel, I felt like as we're revisiting these bylaws that we should. We should address this, so I'm flexible as to what people wanna do.
It seems like though, should we leave it apart? This is except for school employees and employees of the board of library trustees. Is that, that feels like it's a legal thing. As our as our council looked at that.
I think we need to have counsel. Maybe that's the next, especially with both of these is let me. Dover to the town cap, or maybe Diane could send them over to town council to take a look at these. And see what they think of of the proposed changes before we vote on any changes on any of these.
Okay.
Send them tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Yeah, George, you think that I I I liked your change, but you think we need to have some language in there that. To cover the possibility that the HR function may be fulfilled. Through a consultant.
That is. Yeah, that's that's why I don't, yeah, I I'm, like I said, I'm flexible on that. So maybe we have a discussion with town council on.
Yeah.
The one thing I I do think should go through at this town meeting, if we can't resolve that, that's one thing. But absolutely take away the three-year contract. I think that's actually very important to do that, especially now as we're hiring one and have that changed. You know, before they even come in, you know.
Let me ask a question on the three-year contract. I don't disagree, but I'm wondering if the intent was different. Is the intent that we wouldn't do more than a three-year contract? Like, are, or was the intent that we couldn't do a five-year contract?
If there's anything over three years, it has to be voted on town meeting anyway.
Correct. So already limited to that.
Yeah.
If there's someone we think is great in the negotiation, they say one of five year and it goes to town meeting and so on, maybe we do execute a five year, something like that.
So that, yeah, I would definitely then recommend this change or support this change.
Yeah, if, so if you can't resolve the other issues by the next select board meeting, I want to at least move forward with this change. I think I think that's important to do.
Diane, if you wanna see see me on the, when you send these over to the town council, just say I was the one that started working on these drafts.
I will do that.
The town council on that, so we can. Ready to, ready to fully discuss it again at our next meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Right. So I think that's up with that one. Good progress there. And moving on, we have a discussion. And I'm I'm sorry I missed, you know, I still have a perfect attendance record, but I I missed part of the meeting last two weeks ago. About the funding sources for the pavement assessment of Rockwood Street, a continuation from two weeks ago. And if I understand correctly, I believe Sean had some potential proposals or ideas of the cost would take to do an assessment on this. Or is there something else I missed? Just someone else speak before Sean?
Well, just to clarify, th- this is a citizen's petition right now on the warrant to pave Rockwood Street. That's the only thing that exists. I think people can correct me if I'm wrong. We suggested that that wasn't a good idea, given that no one can vote on something, they don't know how much it costs. So right now, the warrant is just to pave it.
Yep, and did we vote on it, um, the warrant article?
I wasn't there on Saturday, so.
Yes, we we voted it down. I think it was three to one.
That's right. That's right. Vote again, uh, then not to endorse. So I believe. That so the the decision was if we had, you know, something moderate, like, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars to do an assessment, assessments to be determined. What are, what are the other requirements that we were to pave this road, such as the, you know, the land disturbance with the, with the, the. Stormwater treatment and a potential cost estimate to. To basically construct this road. I don't call it reconstruct, to basically construct this road, not just pave it, but that that required to do. So do we have any more information on that? Is that what the nature of the last discussion was? I was on board with doing a maybe a reserve fund transfer. From a amount of money. This question's come up a few times. It is a town asset, you know, controlled by the citizens, controlled by the select board as roadway man, as roadway, whatever roadway commissioners. And I thought I supported that. Is there any movement on that? Do we have a proposal to do an assessment on this? What was the discussion on?
Well, the the issue here is I I was the one that suggested we just do a reserve fund transfer. I think. It's not ready for prime time. It doesn't belong on the warrant, because we don't know yet. We could just. Authorize a reserve fund transfer of whatever the dollar amount is to do the study. And then you don't get people voting on something. They don't really know what it's for. If they see a proposal to do a study on paving. And doing water, you know, design for Rockwood, they may vote down the study because they don't wanna spend the money on paving the road. I think we'd be better off just getting all our ducks in a row and knowing what the scope of the work is.
Exactly.
We run a risk that they, if they vote down the engineering study, then you've voted the road and the engineering study down. So I think it's risky, but how. You know, we would have to open the warrant to cause the warrant to be the funding source. For the study.
Yeah, if I wanna fund it. I'll recognize Sean in a second, because he's the one I wanna hear from. I'll just say quickly, I'm just looking for something pretty high level. Thousand-foot level over of magnitude, plus or minus twenty-five percent, plus or minus thirty percent type of cost estimate. Something we just take unit costs, you know, we just went to bid with a, we just had bid numbers from Pine Hill. You know, I mean, I think I think an engineer could pull this together reasonably well and talk big picture. Do you need stormwater treatment? Do you not? Where would you put a BMP, blah, blah, blah. Sean, I saw you raise your head. Like it, I'd like to hear from you if you're still out there. Kind of disappeared off my screen.
All right, am I back on the screen?
Yes, there you go.
Yeah, you are.
So. The way I see it, Eric, and and you only you only missed. You you missed the first half, which which you pretty much summarized anyway. I was suggesting ten to fifteen to do exactly what you just said. It 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 may be some of the engineering. There's, you know, there's definitely some wetlands, so we gotta do a little bit of wetlands work. Ahead of the permit or even or even up to the permit. It's it's not a lot of design. It's it's some stormwater design. We're out of the MS four area, so it's not as quite as onerous. So the the bottom line, whether you wanna vote or not, I. The way I see this is you guys, as the board, could just be giving me direction to do it. I I don't, I think it's way too small of an item to be to be opening the warrant. And and doing that hurdle just to go to town meeting. Ten to fifteen thousand is pretty small. We we. You you know, I have a line item in the budget. This is similar to the, you know, the past few years, we've done things like this. We did it for the. The initial assessment for Pine Hill. We did some of the Woodhaven work the same way. I wouldn't even be asking for a reserve fund today. I mean, you guys can just direct me to be working on it. Knowing that, you know, we're heading into a deficit just on that line item in my budget, we can cover it. It might just end up on the shortlist of things I need to reserve fund later.
Yeah, I I would love to go. I I'd like to go that direction. You know, I I think it's something worth doing. I know other people have other thoughts, but. For anyone wants to make a motion to go that direction, to simply, you know, direct Sean to do. To enter a study, you know, give it a, call it. Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, or not to exceed, yeah, something like that.
I think that'd be great. And if I could make one more comment, I I think it gives. I feel like it gives the hard graves. Really what they were looking for is is the momentum to be doing it. I mean, we all recognize. The citizen petition couldn't, wasn't gonna force the hand of the town to to build the road because there isn't money, but. You know, they they got one better. They got us moving on the engineering. Did you lose me? Okay. So I I I'm fairly confident they'll be happy with it. I think it's the right thing to do. And and, you know, it it's not gonna be done by town meeting. But we can, we can certainly speak to it and know that.
You're breaking up pretty bad, Sean.
I could hear him fine.
Oh, jeez, it's me then.
No, no, it's not you. He cut, he cut off at the very end, the last, last sentence.
That's Eric's way of saying I was talking too long. I'm good.
Caught everybody off who was talking too long this meeting with.
Windows.
The only thing I would say, if this is the direction we wanna go, which I support. I think we should encourage the citizen to withdraw this warrant article, because the problem is if we authorize Sean to do the study. There's still a warrant article to pave the road. And so how good does it look if we authorize Sean to do a study and the and the town votes down paving the road?
Well, I'll recognize John in a second, but I did advise him last time to actually, you know, to withdraw this and it's it's up to him, you know, that. But do not, because I think a loss on this would actually like, you know, have ramifications for years ahead. I think we tough, it's tough to come back from something like that. But nonetheless, it is a town asset and I'm sure it'll come up. You know, John will move away and then someone else will move in and they'll want the road paved. You know what I mean? It is inevitable this will come up. And I think it's it's worth doing this. I really do. It's worth doing the study. I would support it with a town meeting voted yea or nay, on it, to be honest with you. Because it it is a town asset, it's a town, it's a public right of way, and we have a certain obligation to do something here. I do, I I do believe that. But, you know, I've given that advice before and I'll hear from John now.
Yeah, thank you, guys. First of all, this is progress. Really appreciate this. So we have approved that, is that right? The engineering study?
We haven't voted on it yet, but I'm.
I'll withhold my thanks, but but thank you tentatively for that. That is progress. So I am also concerned, because obviously what we ultimately all want is a safe, drivable road. So. We don't want this to pass with a yes with an unknown price tag and put the select board in an awkward position at the end of that. Right? And we also don't wanna cross our wires where we get a vote of yes on this town warrant. And then we're still getting the engineering assessment. Why don't we talk about funding sources right now? I attended the ARPA presentation last time. That was really well done and it looks to me from that presentation like this would fit perfectly into that ARPA funding bucket for that leftover million dollars. That we have in that fund. What do you think about that?
You're talking the study or you're talking the actual paving of the road?
I'm talking about the paving of the road.
To support the paving of the road of ARPA, I'd need to see something more to it. It is a good chance it's gonna be well, well, well in excess of the total available ARPA funds. And that's as as an engineer, yeah.
So truly, you think the cost of this will be more than a million dollars?
Absolutely. Not, no question of mine. I already had a base course on it and it costs like, what, one point four million? And I already had a base course, you know what I mean? So, yeah. It'll probably be over two million dollars.
So we've got maybe a million of that coming from ARPA and then we would have to find the shortfall in the extra, whatever that is, over the million.
But we're so far from that. We never know. I mean, to actually do, you'd have to have a design. But I mean, we're so many, if we said right now, let's do it, you know what I mean? We're at least two years off from actually even coming close to it. You can't just, you can't just tar. We're at least two years off from actually even coming close to it. You can't just you can't just tar a road like you used to. You just can't do it. Or entire different levels. Especially since twenty eighteen, uh and the four permit came out. It's an entirely tired different level. There's realistically I don't see it advancing on the opera funds of this. This is my prediction because of of a lot of things that are shovel ready that are much further along that people are proposing that also have more support, you know, on on it right now. So I I don't see the town saying, let's use every single penny we have in our funds for this unknown thing without a design that's not going to be built for a couple of years. And we have to spend our fund in two years. It's it's just uh that's just my opinion. I could be wrong. You know, I encourage it to go through the process. Um it's one of the reasons I'm encouraging you to withdraw the citizen's petition because it's just, you know, if it if it gets shot down like a hundred and fifty to three or six to six residents, you know, if it gets shot down a hundred and fifty to six, then it's just it's just never going to happen. You know what I mean? It's just realistic, the political reality of things.
So so what I might suggest is a compromise. Uh so if we were able to find a way to perhaps rephrase that to uh tentatively allocate certain funding resources for this project pending the engineering review, right? That enables us all to kind of have a clear path forward. And maybe there's even a cap on that, right? It's not to exceed a certain amount. That's something that it feels to me like would be a win-win. What do you think, Eric?
I'd like to hear my uh let me hear from Mary Ann. She has her hand raised. I like to hear other people's opinions on it. I feel like I'm kind of controlling it. I mean, I am an engineer. I am a roadway engineer in my real life. So I then people look to me a little bit on stuff like this, but I like to get, you know, other ideas on of other funding. I just think this is going to be a I think we're way ahead before I start talking about funding sources. I just I just still, I think we're just getting way ahead of ourselves here. Uh Mary Ann.
Well. Yeah, I I have my hand raised. I'm not a road engineer, obviously, and uh I I just think that uh what what we our goal here is to get this road paved as early as possible, as soon as we can. And there are a lot of hurdles in the way, especially money. Uh I don't think our funds should be used. I think it's not appropriate to use all the opera funds and put it into this one bucket. It it really doesn't 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 fit and it wouldn't be good politically for the town. And also, I think that it wouldn't be good politically for your project to have it voted against a town meeting. It just would give it a sort of negative aura because in the future, if we can get this engineering done with funds that Sean is virtually going to going to give you, give the project or give his time. Uh and we might be want to contribute to that in other in other ways. Uh then it's on the road. We have a plan. And that makes it much easier to go for grant money and other things that would help us raise the rest of the funds and move it forward faster.
Uh Paul, you have your hand raised and welcome back.
Yes, I wanted to apologize to everybody. I got dropped and I had to reboot and get my apologies. I I missed part of or maybe all of the discussions. I'm just coming in. I wanted to say on the subject matter, not knowing where you've already asked that I feel an obligation to all citizens of the town to address issues like access to their property and the effect of erosion. And we have an unpaid road. So I am very much supportive of the notion to spend some money on this. If you've already discussed that, that that's fine, but I be happy to uh make a motion or do whatever is necessary to move that forward so that we can have the information to make decisions. I don't think we can make decisions that knowing what that those numbers are and what's what's involved, whether that we have land takings and things like that, that the neighbors might uh not want to have uh happen. So without them knowing what the project is, without our knowing what the project is, we need more information. And to get that information, we need the money. So I'm urging that we go that direction.
So we heard from John Hargrave a quick about um additional funding for the actual construction. But when you were gone, I was basically fishing for a motion for to authorize Sean to engage in a uh you know, a high level study to look at the costs and other um requirements of paving this road with authorization not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. I was basically fishing for that.
There are one thing. Uh Derek, I just wanted to tell you, Rupert is trying to make a comment. I see him waving his hand at the camera.
Who is?
Have his virtual handle, Lanny Rubin.
Oh, okay. And I got well, um John. Don't I spoke, so let me hear from Lanny. Yeah, go ahead, Lanny. Sorry. If if you don't have the under reactions, if you hit the um that raise hand, it bumps you to the top of the list. We have something like forty one. We had fifty participants. I can't see everyone. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I just caught that.
It bumps you right to the top and I can see you right away. Go ahead.
If I hit what?
Good. Just go ahead, Lanny. Make your comment.
Yeah, I I'm a stranger to this issue, but uh just wha- what is the problem with Rockwood? That this paving is.
May I speak to that briefly for those who haven't been here?
I I'll I'll give a quick high level because I just want to give an unbiased review because I I uh right now, Rockwood is unpaved. And uh the residents would like to see it paved and uh and you know, this um they have some good points that could be, you know, access of our emergency vehicles, public safety and um and long-term maintenance of it, which is, you know, why we're discussing essentially to do a a study of this. And so essentially look at, you know, what is the actual cost of this? See, people have been throwing out numbers from like whatever, wild numbers everywhere. Let's actually have a piece of paper that tells us what the town's actual uh financial fiscal liability is to improve this road without to give it a paved surface.
Okay, well, just speaking for the old sentimental crowd, it's been a beautiful dirt road to walk on. It's been a great addition to Sherburne's image to have the road dirt. And it's often a lot of pleasures and a lot of birds and it has a nice quality to it. I know it's a retrograde to say it, but since nobody seems to be defending poor unpaved Rockwood road, I felt somebody had to rise to the occasion.
Are you the butter on the road, Lanny? I don't know.
Oh, no, 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 we want that.
Okay, okay, just good. Uh yeah, John, you still have your hand raised?
Mr. Rubin, I want to thank you for that comment and I want to say I agree. This is one of the greatest roads in Sherburne. And part of the vision for this is that we can make it even more friendly for the walkers, the dog walkers, the joggers, the bikers that we have because of the length of this road and because we're on a dead end. And because it offers access to Peter's Hill, which is one of the most beautiful spots in Sherburne. And because it leads to Dells Orchard, which is one of our most powerful and important businesses in the entire town of Sherburne, this road is worth saving. This road is worth saving. And if you go visit Rockwood Street and I asked all the members of the select board to go out and drive down our street at the last meeting so that you could see for yourselves what this road is like right now. The road is being washed away because of climate change, because of increased runoff from the development. And we can't turn our heads away and pretend like this isn't happening. We hear about it all the time. The cost of climate change. It's happening right now. Now, after we created the citizen's petition, after we brought it before the select board, it was narrowly voted down three to one. Thank you, Paul, for voting yes. George, you weren't there. I'm sure you would have voted yes too. This happened. A car of teenagers hit a patch of ice in one of the potholes lost control of the car and ran off the road. Now, thank goodness they're okay this time. It's time to get this road fixed. And we can make it something really special for Sherburne.
Okay, understood. So yeah, I think you did make a motion. You said so moved, but um yeah, go ahead.
Well, well, Paul, the only thing is to clarify, we were going to just fund the engineering study from Sean's budget. He feels he has a reliable estimate or a ballpark estimate and he feels he has the funds to do it and we can make a revert reserve fund transfer later if necessary.
Yeah, so just kind of authorized the motion was going to be as as stated by our chair, he did a great job presenting it, but it was moved to authorize Sean Colleen to undertake a high-level study at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars from his budget, something like that.
Yep. I'll accept that and second it.
Okay. A motion in a second. It seems to be forward here. Um let's see. I'll take the vote. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And Paul? Where is?
He keeps freezing up.
No, he went away. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, you know what it is?
Oh, there he is. You're hard to find, Paul.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I might as well, but I'm gonna have to move people around because I can't find Paul.
Page two. I had to go look for him too.
Okay, so Sean, it gives you enough to be dangerous.
Thank you all.
Okay, very good. I'm moving forward with that one there. Sorry, is that in here? Okay. So moving on, we'll go to agenda item number seven, uh presentation on MBTA communities, uh Gino Carlucci, our town planner.
Hi, um I have a couple of short slides, if that's okay?
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
Okay, uh you may be aware that last year, the legislature passed uh the governor's housing choice legislation that included a number of things. You may already know that zoning bylaws that address housing now only require a majority vote instead of two thirds. And one of the other provisions of it was uh this MBTA communities zoning requirement. It's section three A of chapter forty A. And it requires that each town, each MBTA communities and Sherburne is one under the way it's defined uh must create a multifamily by right district uh with a density of fifteen units per acre and of a reasonable size. So um and DHCD was um was um authorized to develop guidelines for implementing this legislation. So um of the requirements as a as I started to say, multifamily housing by right, no special permit, reasonable size and within a half mile of transit. Minimum gross density fifteen units per acre with some adjustments based on Title Five and wetlands restrictions and then DHCD to promul- promulgate the guidelines. So the guidelines define reasonable size as fifty acres. And they also, and they also just using the density of fifteen units per acre determine that uh with fifty acres, the number of units should be seven hundred and fifty or ten percent of the existing housing stock. So um that sounds not so bad, the ten percent, but eh as they've clarified, because it wasn't, I didn't think it was a hundred percent clear from the guidelines themselves, but they've since clarified that it's you must meet both of these tests. So if you have fewer than seventy five hundred units in your town, y- your minimum number is seven fifty. The units cannot be age restricted. Uh if there's no transit in the town, then the district must be near a town or village center. And uh just some details, the district can be split. It doesn't have to be one one fifty acre parcel or parcels. It can be uh divided, but at least one of the areas has to be twenty five acres and no other sub-district can be less than five acres. So failure to comply with this results in loss of eligibility for three specific grants. The Housing Choice Initiative, which we've already received one of those grants for a hundred thousand dollars to to help fund the sidewalk on North Main Street, Local Capital Projects Fund, Mass Works Infrastructure Fund and possibly others at the discretion, not the discretion, but the discretion of DHCD. The there is a provision for um interim compliance. And uh part of that uh achieving that interim compliance is this presentation itself. Uh there must be a presentation about the draft guidelines to the select board. So we're accomplishing that by uh what we're doing right now. Updated parcel maps must be submitted to Mass GIS in meeting a certain standard and that's underway. I've spoken with Wendy. And uh that that will be completed by by the deadline of May second. And there is a uh MBTA community information form that must be submitted by March second. The form is not anything um you know, um burdensome or onerous. It's just uh information about the town essentially and and uh for example, they ask if you think you would need um technical assistance to help you comply. Uh so there's a timeline. This comes straight from the DHCD um slide deck. So the the guidelines were released in December. There's a public comment period and that's I'm going to get to that in a in a minute and comments are due by March thirty first. Uh by May second is the already already noted, the three things have to be done by May second to retain interim compliance and retain eligibility for the grants. Uh by the end of this year, December thirty first, we need to submit an action plan or or request for compliance determination um that that documents how we might go about meeting these requirements. DHCD will approve those plans somewhere between March and July of twenty twenty three. Uh by December thirty first of twenty twenty three, the communities that have subway or major bus service mu- must adopt the zoning amendment by next December. Adjacent communities and commuter rail communities have an additional year to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So uh by by achieving interim compliance, we would still be eligible for for the grants until December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And that's basically it. Um I I think uh I I submitted, I provided a draft letter of comment that we, you know, for your review. And um what what wasn't in there, but I think would be a reasonable addition is this deadline of December thirty first, twenty twenty four, since most towns have spring town meetings that that could probably be we 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 should at least request that it be extended to June of twenty twenty five. And I'll start sharing. And I know other towns are going to be making requests for uh extensions of some of these deadlines. So um March thirty first is the de- is the deadline for comments. And I had provided a letter to to you, Board of Health and Conservation Commission. Board of Health has uh a minor comment on it, but otherwise they were they were okay with the with the draft. Uh I know Marion has some edits to the draft I provided. I don't know if she would like to review those edits or um I could put it on my screen if 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 preferred.
Yeah.
Do you know, should I, can I uh just respond first to Gino for a second?
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead, Mary.
Uh yeah, Gino, I you know, reading over your your letter that I think you've brought you've revised a little bit. I think it's really good. Uh and I do have a few uh edits that don't change the substance of the letter at all. It just kind of clarifies a few things like the fact that our intermunicipal agreements with the neighboring towns are not are not in place for for large developments and the large developments are on hold. Uh and a couple of other minor things, but uh we can do that. We can do that offline. I overall, I thought the letter was really good.
Yeah, uh any other comments?
Yeah, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So while I still have a connection a couple of points. First of all, I support letter and support our recording comments by March thirty first. I have no edits. I commend Gina the work he did and Marion for me a close read with her edits. I don't know what her edits are, but I support her and uh her edits sight unseen, happy to get this letter out.
Yeah.
But the reason why I'm 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 speaking right now is that seven hundred and fifty units, as I said, I think uh me go represents a fifty represents a fifty percent increase in the stock in our town. Currently have about fifteen hundred houses. And when you add seven hundred and fifty more houses, more units in multifamily housing, and you add all the children that go with it, because they have to be family, family friendly. We're talking about changing the character of our town. Talk about possibly having a new elementary school. Maybe a new expanded high school. There is traffic that's gonna be created by all of this. That's gonna be profound impacts on the town. And, and so, while I agree, we should be pursuing trying to get HCD to back off a little bit through our filing comments by March thirty-one. Sort of backdoor information I have is they're not willing to be very flexible on this, and I believe that they're going to be adopting these regulations substantially in the form that they are currently in. I'd like to have us also pursue a Plan B, an alternative plan. That is, to put an article on the warrant for the upcoming annual town meeting that would ask the voters to authorize the select board to file a home rule petition with the state legislature, asking that Sherburne be either taken out of the MBTA district because we have no service anyway, or that we be otherwise exempted from these requirements, given that we're a small community, given the impact that would have on us, it's disproportionate to what's happening everywhere else. So, I would like to suggest we go with that alternative, if we're able to get relief through Gino's letter, and the regulations get changed, then we never need to file the home rule petition. But if we get to the end of the road here, let's say a year two, and we have no place to go, and we're facing this change of character of our community that have, as a resource that we can tell the general court for relief. So, my proposal is to open the warrant, add this additional article, and close the warrant.
Yeah, go ahead, Marion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's absolutely unacceptable to think about adding seven hundred and fifty new units to the town because of a state mandate. It just doesn't make sense, and I, I think my comment before was just to commend Gino's letter, because I think it's about as, as good as you can do at this stage, giving them feedback. But Paul, I'm wondering if, how the home rule option would differ practically, in practical terms, from simply not adopting this bylaw, that is just not complying, which rules us out for certain grant opportunities that we may possibly have in the future. But on the other hand, that commits us, i- if, if we were to adopt this, commits us to costs that may go way beyond what we'd ever get in grant money, like building a new school or whatever. So, I, I, I think we really don't need to take this lying down, and I agree with you in that respect, but I'm wondering what's the difference practically between a home rule petition and simply not complying?
So, the difference is that if you don't comply, that's, has the potential of cutting us off from a lot of state funds. If we get a home rule petition, an act of the legislature, you would be entitled to state funds. We would have the general court paving the way for us, and I think this is a good time to do it while we have we have some good contacts with the legislature right now. And I'm saying, if we have that in the bank, when we're by that, I mean, we, we have the authority, don't have to exercise it. And we can go the route of, of filing the papers on May second, getting provisional compliance, letting time clock run out a little bit, and hope that maybe some other communities will sue, or maybe the legislature will change its mind, or maybe DHCD will modify the regulations in a way that gives some fairer view for small communities like us. This is what makes Sherburne so unique, is that, yes, we're an MBTA community, yes, we're in in eastern Massachusetts, but we are somewhat like a, a eastern Massachusetts town, I mean, we're we have farms, we have forests, we have a different quality of life here. And that little slice shouldn't be made homogeneous, so that there's no difference between us and Wolfam and Newton, and, and any other of these eastern Massachusetts communities. Thing to be said about preserving the character of a community like Sherburne in eastern Massachusetts. And I bet you if we file a home rule petition, so, and at the end of the day, maybe that will force either DHCD or the legislature to address the issue of small commu- a small community in Massachusetts, because there are communities like Carl and Dover and others. So, I could see if we take action, other communities take action, and we go collectively to the legislature saying there needs to be something different for small communities, that might be a good Plan B. So, the point is, let's, there is a difference between giving up grants and trying to get both keep eligibility for grants and not have to add seven hundred and fifty houses.
Yeah, I get it, Eric, can I just make a further comment?
Yeah, go ahead, and then I went, then Daryl.
Yeah, sorry, Daryl, just jump in first. Yeah, I, actually, I totally agree with that, I like that idea a lot. And in mulling over this and stewing over this, this new mandate, I was just reminded of, I, I, I tried to imagine how this came to be at this state, state level. And I would guess, I, I think I would be ninety-eight percent correct to say that it started with the idea of adding houses with a smart, under the smart growth policy that the state has embraced and the MAPC has embraced, and that is add housing close to transit and near jobs, so that we don't increase vehicular traffic, we don't increase carbon emissions, and we save the parts of the state that are still green and environmentally valuable for the state. That's the smart growth policy, and everybody loves it. And I think that, that's kind of where this whole thing got started, but then it got a little bit you know, it, it went into committee, and people said, well, you know, it shouldn't be just these towns near transit, it has to be more equitable, I mean, spread it out, and it became not smart growth anymore at all. And I, can I just share my screen for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the, the, in the summary that I sent around comes from, I think, DHCD or some citizen group. This is, of course, the eastern Massachusetts area that's in, in question. And it, this traces out the, the towns in green or dark green or, or bright green or blue that are on an MBTA or transit route, and all the towns in between are not. And these light towns in between, and Sherburne is one of them, is one of those adjacent communities. But you look at the big picture, and that means every community is an MBTA community around Boston now, by the according to this mandate, with no distinction, well, with only a, a relative distinction between communities that really do have transit and those that don't. And MAPC is concerned about this as well. They did their own analysis of this kind of late in twenty twenty-one, and I want to show you the MAPC map. What they said was that basically, if we really follow the smart growth principles, the MBTA Communities map would look more like this. These are the towns that have land within a half mile of a transit station. And they took only those, and they cut out the towns that don't. So, these adjacent towns, they really took out of the picture in their analysis. And among those towns that do have transit, like, take this group out here. The dark ones, the dark blue ones, have a, a lot of acres near, within a half mile of transit. And those that get lighter have less and less acres, but these are all towns that have land near transit that's potentially developable. And you can say that half of the towns in eastern Massachusetts, including Sherburne, do not, so the only point I'm making with these maps is that I think the bylaw, I would, the, the mandate has gone too far beyond the smart growth principle, and I think it's worth fighting, and I, I like Paul's idea a lot.
Great, I'm like to hear from, I've got a lot of people online now, I'd like to hear from Daryl, please.
Eric, if you wanna finish getting comment from the board, I'm fine, wait.
It's okay, Daryl, you can, you can go before me, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to offer a little context, even though there's some nod to recognizing Title V restrictions in this, but it doesn't seem to really provide something workable, from what I read. So, for reference, under Title V, you're limited to a four-bedroom house on one acre of land when you're trying to put in a septic system. So, to think of having the seven hundred and fifty units on fifty acres is a far cry from the fifty that would be permitted by Title V, and even with the wastewater treatment plant, which might gain you something in terms of density, that discharge being surrounded by drinking water wells would be another complexity that most wastewater treatment plants don't experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl, George, you're next.
Yeah, I wanted to, I, I agree with Paul and with, and with Gino's letter, I think those are both great. One other step I think we should take, because this is ridiculous to require a town like Sherburne to be part of this, and it's broad it's state level, not looking at the overall, like, they're looking at MBTA committees, assuming we're all like Natick. Where are our state reps to represent us on this? Why don't we have Akaraush and our state rep saying, no, this should not apply to places like Sherburne? If they represent us, they should be on board with not doing a broad brush, because that's what they want, you know, they want to look green and say, we're gonna build these things, let's get them to actually represent Sherburne and not not whatever community they come from.
You don't have a state rep.
We do, David Linsky is still our state rep, David Linsky's our state rep until the election, so.
I, I gotta admit, and I'll say, I, I kind of, I like the redistricting that happened, I think it puts us where the communities are more consistent with the interests of Sherburne, to be honest with you. Having Natick and Sherburne in the same, he can have conflicting thoughts on this, Natick is a bulk of his voters. He's not gonna get Sherburne votes anymore after this, I have nothing against David, I mean, this is reality, I think it's worth reaching out to him. But like, maybe this is good for Natick, you know, maybe he wants this to happen, you know, and that's where all his votes come from. And that's unfortunate, and the, our future rep has stepped down, does anyone know if they're gonna have a special election, or can they appoint someone to?
At town caucus, there was a guy, Connor, I can't remember his last name from he's running, he's running for the seat as a Democrat, I don't know who else may be running, but he was at our conference.
Okay, Connor D, okay. Um, I, I wanna
Comment?
Well, I wanna take people in the order where they raise their hands, who's speaking?
That was Frank Hess.
Chris, you gotta put your virtual hand up.
If someone's waving their hand, they're probably on page three or something, so I can't see him waving their hand, but I see Frank Hess, yeah, Frank, your turn, go ahead.
You're muted, Frank.
He's like self-muted, it's not muted, I think maybe his microphone isn't working.
It was working a minute ago, Nancy will fix it for him.
So, who spoke up before? I can't see.
I think Frank did.
Chris Owen.
So, Frank, while you're fixing that, I'll hear from Chris. Chris, under reactions, if you raise your physical hand, it bumps you to the top list, because I can't see anyone. If people are waving at their camera, and they're, they logged on in the last hour, I cannot see them, because they're at the back of the, the second page. So, if you go into reactions, you can, you see the raise hand option, and then I can see.
Okay. May I, may I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
All we wanted to do today, tonight, is present this, show you sort of what we had to do for the next six months or year to sort of stay in interim compliance. Quite honestly, when I was talking to Gino about this, I'm very glad that the board feels this way, because I said, boy, if, if they really want to do this, if we had to present this to town meeting and get a bylaws change, I'd have to move out of town. And so, and, and, and so, and, and, and so, I'm, I'm glad the board is, I mean, ba- basically, I think what we should do is, after all the letters have been sent, we're gonna hear back, and then Gino should update the select board on their response to the input. I do agree with Paul, I was, you know, we were looking at this, trying to figure out, okay, how do we get around this without looking like we're trying to cut corners? The other aspect of it, and, and again, just, just for the sake of completeness, we don't have to provide anything. All we have to do is provide the zoning for it. We don't have to provide the structure, we don't have to provide the infrastructure. But again, I, I still like the select board's approach, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Frank, have you fixed your sound?
Yes, I think I have, you can hear me now?
Yes, I can hear, yes.
Okay, during Gino's presentation, I thought that aside from the seven hundred and fifty units, they also said, or ten percent of your existing stock. And if it was ten percent of the existing stock, then it would seem to me those two failed or on hold projects on Cooley Street together would, would be enough to make the ten percent of the existing stock, if we were to promote that.
It's ten percent or seven fifty or ten percent, whichever is greater.
Yeah, it's a greater.
I didn't see the greater part, but okay.
So, for us, it's fifty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a terrible, terrible thing, yeah, let's do everything we can to, to.
To stop this, so that's gonna go, so what is our next steps? I mean, I, I like Paul's idea. Maybe a home rule petition or whatever, who would draft such a thing? How do we move forward on something like that, and maybe see it as soon as our next meeting?
So, I, I can give you the can I, could I make a, a motion now, or, or at the time we discussed the town meeting warrant? To open the warrant, to add an article, asking the voters to authorize the select board to petition the general court for a home rule petition that would provide for an exemption from this statute and regulations. That's basically the article. If I could make that motion now, I'd make it now, and then we would and let's ask voters.
I think you probably need to do it now, Paul, because our next meeting is two days before the advisory public hearing, so they will have already nailed out the draft warrant that they're gonna vote on it, so it wouldn't be in what people receive.
I think he means now, or agenda item nine. Yeah, make the motion now while your, while your internet connection is still on.
So, I move that we open the warrant for purposes of considering the addition of a new article.
Okay, with town, just so I know, would town council draft that? You're breaking up.
Yes, but I'll give you language so that we've got a placeholder so that town council can fix it.
Okay, very good. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I'm also I. And I guess on another note there, maybe Diane. How do we reach out? Let's reach out to Rebecca Roche. That's pretty much all we got right now, right?
David Linsky, too. I think, I think we should get both. I think we should put it to both of them.
Yeah, let's reach out to them. Absolutely. And I can, and let me know if you need me involved with that at all. I'll happily be be involved to whatever extent you need.
So can I make a next motion, which is to add, now that the warrant is open, to add an article for a home rule petition to ask the general court for an exemption from the requirements of the MBTA community provisions.
Is that different than the time meet? Oh, sorry. Is that different than the one you just made? Isn't that the time?
It was the first one was to open the warrant. Now he's making a motion to add to the warrant.
Got it.
Yes. Thank you, George.
Second.
A second. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I'm also I.
And I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Second.
Or before anybody else gets in there.
Steven Si will second your motion. I think we're going to need a little bit more of a presentation because Steve just made the point that these are unusual because he'll have an advisory public hearing with advisory seeing it for the first time in their public hearing. Normally, they've reviewed them in their February meeting, so we're going to have to make accommodations at the advisory public.
Hopefully, they'll consider it because it's such an important.
No, I think they happening, so probably will, but you know, no one will really be up in the background, so you'll have to maybe allow a little more time for explanation.
We should make the materials available to them that we just got from Gino. If we could send that to advisory in advance, that would help. And if we could have Gino at the advisory hearing on Saturday and have him make the presentation again, that would be helpful, too.
I see Mary Ann has her hand raised. Good. Mary Ann, and just so we have a motion, I don't know if we have a second to close the warrant on. Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
I made the motion.
Yeah, we can. Let's finish with this motion, and then I'll say what I'm going to say.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Well, I'm confused. We have three motions. What are we voting on? Which one?
The motions to close the warrant. We already voted on the.
We were, the other was, okay, I I I I.
Uh, Mary Ann? Uh, George?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
I'm also I. Okay, now, Mary, you had, you had a comment to make?
Yeah, just a comment. You know, there have been several things that have come up tonight for which we really haven't had time to to deal with the way we wanted to. We need a little more time. We need another meeting. And it's such a crunch time just before town meeting and the hearings on everything. I'm just wondering if it would be wise to schedule a select board meeting, a weekly select board meeting, one next week and one the follow, one the following week before the Saturday hearing. And I'm sure nobody wants to do this, but it seems that there are a few things we've kind of brushed through tonight.
Mary, and I'll let you suggest it to my wife because next Thursday is her birthday.
Oh.
But that's okay. I'll let you ask her.
That motion?
No, I mean, I'm not making a motion, but.
No, I'm joking with you. I don't think she cares. It is her birthday.
Oh, is your boy's birthday on St. Patrick's Day?
Yeah.
No, that's pretty good.
And my sister's.
It was just a thought that we might consider.
It's a good thought, to be honest with you.
It is a good thought.
Diane, how does our agenda look for next week when everything?
Well, it's the twenty fourth agenda.
Well, we don't have an agenda for this week. We're not meeting yet until the twenty fourth, so.
I always say next week. I I meant to.
Um, twenty fourth, yeah, pretty, pretty busy. I mean, I'll make room if we need to to. I don't, I don't know what's going to come up for executive sessions either. See, that's the problem lately. I know.
The executive sessions.
How long we have a meeting next week, but with no executive sessions?
There you go.
Yeah, that's an idea.
So basically, that's kind of reopening the consent agenda, agenda item number one. Does someone want to make a motion to have a, may put a placeholder and have a the basic, um, have a meeting on the seventeenth? And I'll basically, probably I'll make a judgment if it looks like we're getting close to it and nothing, it's thin, it's nothing imminent, maybe I cancel it. You know what I mean?
Do you want to basically just to review the warrant and have nothing else on there?
Yeah, what else did we have? What were a few things we're waiting on?
We can do, we can have the TA and F and finance director articles by next week.
Okay, that's a good one.
Steven just asked, yeah.
Yeah, then then that gives them an extra week before they, you know, so that advisory gets to see that. We'll have this home rule warrant maybe to review next week.
Okay.
That way we can send it to advisory in advance.
Well, we already voted on our next agenda item, so I guess someone will have to make a motion just to have a meeting next week.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul? Okay, I'm also I. Very good. That's a good thought. That's a good thought, Mary Ann. We'll put it in there. Like I said, if it looks like we don't need it, then I can, you know, pull it last minute, but we'll have it on our calendars. Okay, is is so is that it for agenda item number seven? I believe so.
Yep.
Okay, number eight, request a reserve fund transfer. Deb?
I, I, yes, I'd like to reserve, uh, request a reserve fund transfer for eighty one thousand dollars to cover the extraordinary unforeseen expenditure incurred due to the termination of the town administrator effective January the fifteenth.
I'd like to modify that that language to maybe. Departure, thank you.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's all I was looking for.
Alrighty.
Okay, any questions, comments, or motions?
Move to approve.
All right, I'll do a second.
A second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am also I. Okay, thank you very much, Deb.
All right, thank you.
Um, next up, review of draft annual town meeting warrant. So Diane, remind me, was this like a global catchall for anything that we hadn't discussed yet, or is there something specific for this?
Well, I am, I'm I'm muted. Um, you really haven't taken the warrant and gone through it article by article.
I know.
So usually we've done that by now.
Could I suggest it's it's twenty past ten?
Yeah.
We've been at this since, uh, six thirty. We've had a lot of issues that we've discussed. Going through the warrant is that's like an hour and a half, two hour proposition.
I think if we're going to have a meeting next week, let's do it next week. Let's just not get even worried. Let's move on to the next item. We'll finish this meeting.
Exactly. Okay, yeah. I was exactly going to say that, again, for the reason why I have a meeting next week. Okay, so no more questions, comments on that? Okay, how about routine business? Any select board reports?
I have one thing I want to bring up, and I've said it a few times, and I know Jeff's going to disagree with me, but these technological issues we've been having every week are really great for me. When the world's opening up again, why we're meeting over Zoom kind of boggles my mind. I think we should really consider going back to live meetings so we can hear every comment Paul makes and not every Paul comment Paul makes garbled. Last week, we lost our DPW director halfway through due to technological issues. I don't see why we're doing this anymore. I know it's, I know there's a lot more participation, but I also think we need to get back to somewhat normalcy.
So let me ask you, there was a grant, or not you, but ask, I'm going to ask, maybe Diana or whoever knows about it. There's a grant to allow some kind of hybrid technology, would have a camera, some TV, something like that. So you get the participation, but still have a live meeting. What's the status of that grant? And what's the status of the purchase of that equipment?
We, we received the money. Uh, I actually, Gino and I had a discussion about that the other day. And he was going to order the equipment.
All right, let's get it. I guess let's, you know, accelerate that to the extent that we can. And Paul, do you have a question, or is that hand raised leftover from the previous?
Leftover, leftover.
And we've also, we've also added fires, Verizon fires instead of Comcast, so we'll, Town Hall will have a much better bandwidth than it previously had.
So Jeff, is that, is that COVID group still meeting, or or what does it take to go back? So it's still under a board of health, right? There's still the board of health.
Well, they only made recommendations, you know, I don't know. I don't know that they've, they've been focused on the schools and that kind of thing recently, and I don't know that they, I mean, the the state has changed the ma- and CDC, the mask requirement, so that's one thing that's changed, but.
Schools are back to complete normalcy.
I think the reason for the hybrid, from my perspective, and I don't completely disagree with George, is that I think it, we want to keep the uh, participation as high as we can. So if there are people who particularly in this senior citizen bandwidth don't feel comfortable coming, we would still keep them as participants if they could participate hybridly, but the, you know, main participants wouldn't have to.
And that would allow us also to be able to share projections, you know, now we're sharing our screen. It's very convenient.
Well, there's a case, like I travel for business sometimes, or sometimes, so so the advantage is, you know, you don't have to miss a meeting. We've had some meetings where people had to miss it. If I was on the road and, you know, I could still participate remotely, uh, just because I was away, it would be good.
No, that's good. I I like the the hybrid, but I also think in general, try to meet in person, bring something back and 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 I think there is something about being able to talk face to face about some of these issues.
We could reintroduce ourselves to Rick Terrera.
After I gained the COVID fifteen, I don't think my suit fits anymore, though. That's not a problem. With the, uh, so I guess the only thing is, so the board of health still has a standing recommendation, right? Do you think, and I was asking you, Jeff, because you're kind of the closest, you attend a border health meeting. Do you think they're gonna take, make a reverse that recommendation or do something else? Do you think it's just people that's going to go kind of do what they want? Do you know what I mean? Is there any thought?
Why don't, why don't we just, and Daryl's on here, why don't we see if they would be? We can, I'll talk to them. They could put it on next week. They meet next Wednesday. So maybe they can take it up at their Wednesday session.
Yeah, Daryl's not here anymore. I can tell.
I think it's going to, I mean, the the hybrid technology, I'm not sure how long that would take either, so we'll have to gauge that as well.
I would like to go purchase a hybrid and almost make it like as soon as it's in, do it.
Yeah.
You know, we go from fifty one participants, and without Elliot Taylor, we're lucky to get three.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get Suzie or.
Suzie moved out of town, too, so we can.
No, she's Ben Franklin now.
Oh, is she? Is she on here as Ben Franklin?
Not tonight. No, she isn't, but she was at our meeting the other day.
Well, Gino has left the meeting, too, but I would say as soon as that hybrid system is installed, we should go back to in person for sure. And if there's a long delay in it, maybe we'll go back, you know, sooner, but we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree with George. I mean, I'm not quite, I don't want to go, I'd like to do it when we get the hybrid technology there. And I'd like the border health, actually, because they still have a standing recommendation not to do these. I'd like them to actually, like, you know, either just rescind that or or make an opinion otherwise or something like that, just because I think it's a proper route to go there. And yeah, I look forward to, um, to doing live meetings. I do. I've yet to chair one, I feel, unless you count town meeting. Okay, um, any other select board reports? How about town administrator reports?
No, I have nothing.
I have a quick select board report, and I won't actually give it tonight, but I I'm about to submit a an an application to the MWRA uh, to make public access to the Aqueduct route through through northern Sherburne, uh, legal for public use as a trail. But I'll I'll bring that up next week. I don't want to start it now.
Okay, I'll tell you, though, that was before the planning board, several years ago. I think it was before you were on the board.
I was there, Eric. I I remember it well.
Remember the pitchforks and the torches?
Oh, yes.
So good luck with that, I guess.
A butters, you mean a butters?
We found a way around it. I don't, not to worry, not to worry.
Okay. That, by the way, I remember, that was the first meeting I'd ever chaired, because I'd actually, John was out, and I had actually.
You did a great job, Eric. It was.
My first meeting, and it was a big meeting.
And you wish it was hybrid.
Look at how much things have changed. All right, um, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well.
Happy radio, everybody.
Yep, you too. Thank you.